Hey, good afternoon. It got quiet, so I guess we'll start the meeting. Welcome to our afternoon meeting for October 26, 2021. Could you please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you're able? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by God and to the people of this world.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by the District 9 Star recipients, I'm told. So Councilmember Foley is here to tell us more. I think we have a mic issue. Let's hang on just one moment. We're gonna get that on for you.
Go.
That works.
Okay. This is a bit of departure from the normal invocation that we have every, every meeting, but it's my last meeting in, in October, and I'd like to award the District 9 Stars. District 9 Stars are a recognition by people who are doing good work in the community. The only criteria, they have to be a District 9 resident, and they have to be nominated by someone else. So today I have three individuals and groups who have been nominated by their loved ones, by their community members, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about them. But first, I want to continue telling you a little bit about the D9 Star. This Star Award was presented initially by my predecessor, two councilmembers ago, Judy Chirko. Every year she would present a District 9 Star. I've taken over this exciting opportunity to be able to recognize people who are doing kindness, spreading generosity throughout our community, and you're gonna hear about them in just a minute. It's my pleasure, really, to, and my teams, to look at all the nominations we receive and then narrow them down to three every year. It's actually a pretty difficult challenge because we have so many wonderful people and organizations who are doing such good work. So today, I'm going to highlight three of them. The first is the South Valley Fish Food Pantry. They were nominated by Kathy Myers, and today we are joined by Amy Sapp, Melanie Adkins, Tracy Gennatra, and Anne Christian. And also Dave Myers, I'm sorry, standing in for Kathy who couldn't make it today. For the past five years, the organization has spent every Thursday afternoon providing free meals and groceries to those in need in the Cambrian area. They provide holiday meals three times a year and backpacks for children returning to school. Thanks to coordination with Second Harvard's Food Bank, generous monetary donations, and the hard work and compassion of their 80-plus volunteers of all ages, they're able to serve approximately 45 families per week. Organization was, this organization was functioning in a time when their services to minimize food insecurity were needed the most, feeding 2,073 families in 2020. They go above and beyond to be accommodating and kind to all their, their clients. They operate out of St. Timothée's Church in the Cambrian area. I am commending the South Valley Fish Food Pantry for their admirable leadership in the Cambrian community, ensuring that individuals and families in need are able to be fed and nourished, warmly welcoming those of all ages as volunteers and making their services as accessible as possible. Please join me in thanking them for their work. And I will say that in the past, we've been able to give a commendation and a chocolate star, but we can't give a chocolate star anymore. The vendor's out of business and we couldn't find them, so instead, we're giving them a bontini. So sorry, I don't have a chocolate, but for this group, it'd be, it's easier to split up a bontini. With that? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Vicky Boz-Mok and HB Mok. And what's really exciting is that, remember last week for the invocation, I had Karen Adamsky do an invocation. Karen was one of my first D9 Star recipients, and she nominated HB and Vicky. So I'm excited to reciprocate, or she was excited to reciprocate. Nominated by Karen Adamsky, as I just mentioned, and what they bring is they add beauty to the neighbors, neighborhood through painted rocks that are placed under the tree in front of their home and contributions to the Art Box Project. I heard that HB makes the best Snoopy rocks. I want one because Snoopy rocks. Both volunteer time and talent through the Happy Hollow Foundation. Vicky's a board member. HB is building a chicken coop to enhance Happy Hollow Park and Zoo. Vicky demonstrates her belief in the power of community through starting the nonprofit group Compass Collective, where she plants the seed and shows how easy it is to, to get involved and give back. She published a field guide to community service, where to go for community activism, getting kids involved, social services, art, and more. And here's the book. It's quite extensive. Field Guide 2.0. There must be a 1.0. They host Front Yard Fridays, their way of bringing neighbors together to meet each other and grow as a community. I thank them for being such a wonderful team who spreads joy and finds meaningful ways to bring the community together. Thank you for all that you do. Please join me in thanking them. Latha, please come forward. Latha Santosh is, was nominated by Shrada Santosh, her daughter. Unfortunately, her daughter's not here, but I believe you're her son. Welcome. You obviously know you have a wonderful mom. When Latha and her family moved to the Cambrian neighborhood in 2000, they were one of five Indian families living in the area. Today, there are over 600. Wonderful role models who pours her heart out into organizing social events that seek to bond all Indians within the area and allows them to celebrate their roots. Diwali and Mendi night as examples. She has created numerous fundraisers for local organizations such as the Humane Society and Lee High School. She provides support to the younger generation in her community through kickstarting events such as Camp Sapne, Big Brother and Sister, and Doggy Love. That sounds like fun. She is passionate about sustainable living, volunteer time in installing compost bins in 57 homes, as well as at Oster Elementary School. She prepared compost starter ingredients to ensure each home is successful in their journey. Their family does their part as well by adding more color and vibrancy to their home through contributions to the Art Box. Today, I'm honoring Latha for being a natural-born leader, a jack-of-all-trades, and for taking a hands-on approach to making a difference within the Cambrian community and beyond. Thank you so much. Please join me in thanking her. Thank you so much. So concludes my District 9 Star presentation. There are so many more people and organizations that I could have awarded, but for now, these are the three. I'll see you next year when I have three more. Thank you for all the work that you do.
All right. Thank you to our District 9 Stars for all you do for our community. And we're gonna go find some chocolate stars. We know they're out there. All right, let's go to ceremonial items before we jump into our agenda. First, we'll start with Councilmember Carrasco. She's going to help us proclaim Filipino-American History Month.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Magdalena Carrasco, and I represent the beautiful east side of San Jose, home to many Filipino-Americans here in the city of San Jose. October is Filipino-American History Month. October was chosen as it marks the first documented landing of Filipinos in what is now known as the continental U.S. This was on October 18, 1587. This month is meant to highlight and educate on those legacies created by our Phil-Am community. Since 2009, October has been designated as Filipino-American History Month. The Filipino-American community includes a rich history in both the Philippines and throughout the United States, sharing with us their fierce advocacy and organization, diverse traditions, incredible dishes, and their intense sense of justice, aiding during war efforts and now against COVID-19 virus. There exists, there exists such a broad spectrum of Filipino trailblazers to reference. You've got labor leaders like Larry Leong, who would have been 108 yesterday. Philip Veracruz, whose leadership sparked the Delano Grape Boycott Strike. Actors and celebrities like Vanessa Hudgens, Alec Mapa, drag queen Manila Luzon, and Bretman Rock, who bring Phil-Am representation to our screens. Singers like the mega-talented Bruno Mars. That one surprised me. Olivia Rodrigo, who reigned the charts. And our very own Attorney General Rob Bonta, who prior to being AG, was the first Filipino-American to enter the California State Legislature. Icons that have cemented the Phil-Am talent, the Phil-Am spirit into the great tapestry of our country. Our country and region owe the Filipino-American community a great debt of gratitude. It was labor, it was those labor leaders like Larry and Philip Veracruz who played a pivotal role in the labor strikes and grape boycotts as they organized groups of Filipinos to strike against the grape growers of Delano, California, alongside Mexican-American leaders such as Dolores Huerta and Cesar Chavez, thus beginning a collaboration between Filipinos, Mexicanos, Chicanos, and other ethnic groups that would go on for years. I'm incredibly proud that we, as a city, have enshrined the great legacy of the naming of one of our newest parks as Delano Manong Park. The only park, by the way, to bear homage to the Filipino community. This gem of a park will sit squarely at the north end of District 5, serving as a beacon for the Phil-Am community. And I would be remiss if I didn't shine a light on our unspoken heroes, those Phil-Am nurses who selflessly helped our community, especially in those areas that were hardest hit, the east side being one of them. Oftentimes during the pandemic, we saw beautiful, heartwarming interviews dedicated to the struggles of our nurses and healthcare staff. But rarely did we see the many Filipino faces. According to UCSF in California, a little over 20% of registered nurses are of Filipino descent. We recognize your sacrifice. We mourn what you have lost, and we profusely thank you for your service. The diversity of San Jose runs wide and deep. We have more commonalities than we have differences. As a Mexicana, our bond is established. Bound by Spanish colonization, I turn to our Phil-Am community as a sister with a common understanding of our history. We share in traditions, faith, and even language. It's my pleasure to have with me today, to have with us today, Trustee Thelma Bach, Dr. Rowena Tomanenga, Ron Muriera, and Dr. Angelica Cortez. I'd like to ask, oh, let me just mention. I just want to mention that Dr. Angelica Cortez from Lead Filipino is an unbelievable organization here in the city of San Jose. Since 2015, Lead Filipino has provided critical services and programs to educate and uplift the leadership of Filipinos in the community. Lead works arduously with hundreds of students and their families through educational programs to provide technical assistance and distribute thousands of dollars in financial assistance to low-income community members. I'm extremely grateful for their presence and their collaboration and the support that they provide for our families. I'd like to formally invite you to all join me and Lead Filipino at our Filipino Flag Raising Event this Thursday from 6 to 8 here at City Hall. event this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 here at City Hall. Come enjoy a beautiful night of culture, of tradition, and of course, good food. I also encourage you to check out Lead Filipino's series of events. They are keeping busy making sure that our Phil-Am community is being properly represented and taken care of. Now, I'd like to ask the mayor to please present the proclamation, and I'm going to have Ron say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco, for being such an amazing supporter of the Filipino-American community here in San Jose. So on behalf of the Filipino, Filipina, Philippine X community in San Jose, deepest thanks to Councilmember Carrasco for her continued support of our community, Mayor Licardo, and councilmembers for recognizing and acknowledging October as Filipino-American History Month, established by the Filipino-American National Historical Society in 1991, and thereafter recognized through resolutions passed by the California State Legislature, the U.S. Congress, various secondary and post-secondary institutions, and for the first time in 2015, acknowledgement by President Barack Obama in the nation. Thank you for your continued commitment towards recognizing the value, significant contributions that Filipino, Filipina, Philippine X Americans make to San Jose. As the councilmember said, it's also a milestone this year for San Jose as we have the naming of Delano Manongs Park in San Jose East San Jose, to be specifically regionally and territorially correct. East San Jose, dedicated to the Filipino Manongs who organized and led the 1965 Delano Grape Strike. So Filipino-American History Month this year's theme is 50 Years of Filipino-American Movement. Far West Conference 50 years ago was established by young Filipino-American organizers and student activists, and to this day, we continue with Lead Filipino of the cultivation of young Filipino-American organizers, activists, educators, which is integral to all our communities. So this month is about, not just about accomplishments and achievements of our past pioneers, but bringing awareness and celebrating the Filipino, Philippine, Philippine X Americans who are making history now. Angelica is one of them, and our pioneers, Thelma Boak, Dr. Tomanenga. Finally, I'd like to recognize, as Councilmember Carrasco had said, and honor our courageous Filipino, Philippine, Philippine X medical and healthcare workers who have been on the front lines combating the COVID-19 pandemic in San Jose, Santa Clara County, and throughout the nation. Many have made the ultimate sacrifice with their lives to care for those afflicted by this dire pandemic. To them, we are forever grateful. Thank you so much for your acknowledgement of Filipino-American History Month. Mabuhay.
Okay, we don't often do this, although I suppose we should be doing this more, but we're honoring the departure of one of our long-serving commissioners, and that's Vince Sensory. So Vince, could you please come down? Councilmember Foley, I know is gonna join me up here, because I believe you're one of the great D9 residents, about which she's so proud, and welcome Vince. So in addition to the many ways in which, I'm gonna take this off, that's all right for the purposes of speaking, in addition to the many ways in which Vince serves our community as a board member via services, I know you've been very active in Rotary, I think you lead an effort with nearly 100 high school students every year, Silomar Leadership Camp, I actually went to that when I was a little kid, actually I wasn't so little, but anyway, that was a fantastic experience, and I can't believe you're doing it, because that's an incredible amount of patience. But speaking of patience, Vince has endured almost as many public meetings as Councilmember Foley and I have. He is stepping down as a trustee of the Police and Fire Retirement Board after almost 11 years of service, beginning in 2010. And that's particularly relevant because, both because of the quality of Vince's service and leadership, as well as the time which came in was so critical. Vince was a longtime chair of our investment committee at a critical moment when we were just beginning to learn about some of the very serious, serious challenges that our retirement funds faced around very large unfunded liabilities stretching into the billions of dollars and a desperate need for greater professionalism in our investment decision-making. And Vince hit the ground running, and in 2010 really charged ahead making sure that we had a much more responsible approach to investment, something that focused, really enhanced a focus on risk management, which is something we really didn't have prior to that time. And these are the kinds of changes, and this is the kind of effort and leadership that doesn't get noticed by our residents, but it has huge impacts if we think about the hundreds of millions of dollars that really are in the balance, and our retirees depend on those dollars, and if they're not there for our retirees, it means it gets cut from our services that our residents so critically deserve and need. And so, we really wanted to honor Vince for coming in in really a difficult time in this city in 2010, when I think we all recognize this was a part of our city that was in crisis, and frankly, retirement services at that moment was pulling the rest of our city into crisis. And I remember the closed-session discussions around, do we consider bankruptcy or not? Those are the kinds of very stark realities we're facing around the time of the Great Recession thereafter, because we were seeing these enormous unfunded liabilities and trying to figure out, how do we pull out of this? So we are grateful for all of Vince's leadership in helping us to right this ship, and grateful also for Roberto Peña and the other members of the trustee, the board who are here to cheer on Vince. Thank you for cheering on a colleague. And I think I've said enough. Councilmember Foley, did you want to say anything more?
Can I cover a couple others?
Okay, sure, jump on in.
Can I hand you that though for a moment?
So I've had the privilege to know Vince for almost 20 years, I think, through our mutual involvement through the Rotary Club's Enterprise Leadership Conference. Vince has been a mentor to 100 children, high school juniors every year since about then, and he and I were team partners mentoring these students together. I'm proud to also call Vince one of my mentors. He is a tireless advocate of doing the right thing. He's been involved in Via Services, which helps disabled children, they have camps, he's been involved in that for years. This is a man who never says no to volunteering. He's only stepping down because of a business conflict, that's it. It's not because he wants to, I'm sure he would continue to stay on the board, but I know his services will be beneficial elsewhere. I know there will be some organization, some student, some family, some group who will truly benefit from his involvement, and I'm just so honored and proud to know you, to call you my friend and mentor. You're a wonderful man, Vince Sensory, it's my privilege. Can I give you a hug?
Yeah, just a few words. Really, I want to thank the council, the mayor, city manager, city attorney for the leadership in this city. It's really critical and important, and we really value it as citizens of San Jose. I'm a native San Josean, so I really appreciate that. The leadership on the Police and Fire and Federated Board, our CEO Roberto Peña, our CIO Prabhu Palani, we have the Police and Fire Board Chair Drew Lonza, Vice Chair Andrew Gardner here. Really, the board came together over the last 10 years, worked diligently to help reduce the unfunded liability. It's an incredible group of volunteers as board members, and I'm really proud to have been a part of it. Thank you.
I should tell you, as a former plan board member, those are long meetings, so thank you. It's a lot of time and commitment. Councilmember Sparza, please join me. We're going to recognize and commend Steve O'Brien and Sage Hopkins. Welcome.
This is very high. Sage? Today, I'm so honored to present a commendation to Steve O'Brien and to Sage Hopkins, recognizing their courageous actions to shine a light on sexual abuse and ensure that the voices of survivors were heard and amplified. Steve O'Brien joined San Jose State Athletics in 2017 as deputy director, having already earned a national reputation as an athletics administrator. Originally an attorney, Steve began his career in intercollegiate athletics at Santa Clara University in 2006, his alma mater, as an assistant athletics director. He then served as the associate athletics director for development at UC Santa Barbara before spending six years as senior associate athletics director at the U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis. He has also served on the NCAA's Committee on Sportsmanship and Ethical Conduct. Sage Hopkins has served as head coach of the women's swim and diving team at San Jose State for 16 seasons, including several of their best seasons ever, and has twice been honored as the Western Athletic Conference's Women's Swimming Coach of the Year. After becoming aware of disturbing allegations of sexual abuse by a trainer within the athletics department, Sage Hopkins began reporting these allegations to the university administration as far back as 2009, and was met with resistance that lasted over a decade. But Sage continued to bring these allegations to light, including reporting to the NCAA and now separate Title IX investigations, as well as a federal investigation have determined that the allegations are accurate and truthful. However, Sage's efforts in bringing this abuse to light were not welcomed, and as deputy director, Steve was tasked with disciplining the swim coach, which he refused to do. He was fired shortly thereafter. Coaches and all those who serve as leaders for our student athletes have a profound responsibility for the well-being of their athletes. This is a sacred mantle that transcends a mere job title. This is true leadership, taking personal and professional responsibility for those you serve. When our institutions fail to protect those they are supposed to serve, when those in positions of power turn a blind eye to abuses, it falls on a brave few who are willing to put their professional livelihood on the line to serve as whistleblowers and to protect those whistleblowers when needed. This requires steadfast courage and conviction, and it requires a willingness to sacrifice one's own professional and personal comfort and safety for the good of others. Steve O'Brien and Sage Hopkins both prioritize the safety of their student athletes at great professional cost to themselves because they knew it was the right thing to do. Their actions in bringing to light serial misconduct of another member of the athletics department allowed the voices of numerous survivors of that abuse to be heard and saved untold numbers of athletes from future abuse. Steve O'Brien and Sage Hopkins, for your courage and conviction in standing up for the survivors of sexual abuse, we are so honored to present this commendation to you from the city of San Jose. Would you like to say a few words?
I'll take this off, hoping that I don't have to speak on this account again. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Sparza, Mayor Licardo, and the other members of the San Jose City Council. Although underlying this commendation is the sadness of suffering of others and dismay that the actions that Coach Hopkins and I took should be so uncommon as to warrant public recognition. It's humbling, though, to receive a civic commendation from the city in which I was born and raised. I'm deeply moved by this acknowledgement. I'm here today with my wife, Julianne, and the oldest of our two sons. It's in everyone's best interest that our younger son remain at daycare for naptime today. I want to thank all of them, as they too endured the disruption to our life and the economic hardship associated with job loss and my ouster from the college athletics industry at the outset of the pandemic. More importantly, I want to thank Julianne for reminding me that no job, title, or even career is worth compromising one's integrity over. And I want to thank our boys for being an ever-present inspiration to set a positive example and then do the right thing, not only regardless of adverse consequences, but sometimes in the sheer face of them. To the student athletes, I'm incredibly sorry for the abuse you suffered and the uphill battle you faced to remedy and end the situation. I applaud your courage and resilience throughout the ordeal. You're a source of strength for many, and I wish you the same in your own personal journeys of healing and recovery moving forward. And finally, I'd like to express gratitude and congratulations to Sage Hopkins, who for over a decade tirelessly pursued justice for these victims and tried to protect other student athletes. You're a testament to the collegiate coaching profession, and it's a privilege to share this stage with you today. Thank you again for this commendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparza, Mayor Licardo. This is a humbling honor, and I'd like to start off by expressing my gratitude and love for my wife Tammy and my children Gunner and Summer. This has been a very difficult period of time, and I would be remiss for not acknowledging the impact on my family and how tough it's been for them. Words cannot express the strength you have provided me and the comfort you have given me, especially over these past two years. I'd also like to express my gratitude for the dynamic and visionary leadership of our new athletics director, Jeff Conia, and I'm excited to be part of his vision for the new era of San Jose State Athletics. I would also, I also feel it's important to thank two other people, Tracy Sagawa, our former Title IX director, for her assistance in bringing justice to this situation, as well as my former assistant, Whitney Jorgensen, for her assistance in the various reporting over the last two years. As I've said, this is not and should not be about me. Our thoughts, empathy, and passion should be with the dozens of survivors from six separate teams at San Jose State, and our focus should be on their healing. While this represents an ugly chapter in the history of San Jose State, I ask that people view it for what it is. This is the actions of a serial predator and a small group of rogue administrators who enabled his abuse over a 10-plus-year period. None of these people represent our university for what it truly is, a vibrant, diverse, and transformational campus that is led by a world-class faculty and blessed with an amazing student body. Steve, I'd also like to thank you for your courage, and it's something we should see a lot more of everywhere, but especially in intercollegiate athletics. Again, thank you, Councilmember Sparza, Mayor Licardo. Again, thank you, councilmember Esparza, Mayor Liccardo.
All right, on to the agenda. On Orders of the Day, does anyone in the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I have, I understand, under item 2.16, that could be added under Orders of the Day, but that requires a two-thirds vote. That's the amendment to the master agreement with SmartWave Technologies, the Eastside Union High School District Community Wi-Fi. And then, a new item, the last item, 2.16, that was amended for this, for addition. There's a new item as well, 2.20, that's a redistricting commission appointment, also be added under Orders of the Day, that also requires a two-thirds vote. So, that's what we have. Are there any other changes?
No, I'll make the motion to add the two under Orders of the Day.
Thank you. It's a motion of councilmember Esparza, second of councilmember Carrasco. Let's vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to the closed session report, Nora.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items the council would like to pull? I have one request from councilmember Peralos on 2.15, which is the Warm Springs Quiet Zone. There are other items to pull. And I'm not looking at my Zoom screen, so I'll ask Toni if she sees any hands from our council. I'll get on Zoom right away.
There are no hands.
Okay, thanks for the help, Toni. Okay, then let's go first to 2.15, which is the Warm Springs Quiet Zone. I want to thank councilmember Peralos for his efforts, leadership on this, as well as our Department of Transportation. This has been a very hard challenge, and it seems like we're making some great progress with the help of Congresswoman Lofgren and many others.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we have anybody in the public that's wishing to speak on this item on Zoom. If not, I'll only give my comments. We do? Or we don't? I'm saying yes and no.
I have one member of the public with a hand up. I don't know if that's for this item or all of consent calendar.
Oh, got it. Maybe we can go to them and then I'll...
Okay, let's hear from members of the public.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, I'm Blair Beekman here. I wanted to speak on the remaining consent calendar items, but to quickly add a comment, good luck working with this issue. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that was just on 2.15, so we'll go back to councilmember Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you too, as well, to you, Mayor, and your staff for being there to support on this issue. This really has been an issue over the last number of years. Came about, actually, in a shift from Union Pacific Railroad's operations back in 2019. Traditionally, we're running daytime trains and didn't really have too many trains that would run overnight, and they had a shift in operations at that point. And since early 2019, have been running multiple trains throughout the middle of the night. And unfortunately, as they're crossing over every single intersection through what is a very slow-moving corridor for them, they're required to blare their horn in a sequential pattern at a very loud level, and we have quite a bit of residents in and around in the area there. And in fact, you can hear it blocks away. I imagine even the mayor hears it. And so, it has been really, really troubling for our community members in and around the core downtown. And as soon as the issue came about, my office and the mayor's office as well got engaged to try to see what we could do. And unfortunately, the best opportunity was a quiet zone, but that, as we knew at that point, was going to be very costly and very time-consuming. Hence, I think why I'm excited and why I pulled off consent today, because we have now come to a great point in this process. And even though our community members have really endured a lot of trauma and disturbance throughout the last number of years, especially this last year and a half with the pandemic, with so many people working from home, this is a milestone that we're really excited about and looking forward to being able to move forward with it and continue the effort. I want to say thank you as well to Assemblymember Colra and Senator Cortez's offices. The state came through with $8 million of support this past year. We had Congresswoman Lofgren's office, who was attempting to get some federal funds as well, that unfortunately did not come through, but she's been a great advocate, helping us out through the process, and Supervisor Chavez's office as well. It's really been a team effort, but it has been our city DOT staff that has really carried the water for all of us. And so, I just want to say thank you for your work over the last couple of years. John Risto, Alisar, Aun, Stacy Liu, Jessica Zank, and the entire DOT team for your efforts and persistence in working diligently alongside the Federal Rail Authority, UPRR, and the CPUC. This has absolutely been a true partnership to try to get to this point. And then lastly, we've had some community members that have really been there for us, Jason Muirring and Christopher Wimp, that have been fierce advocates and been with us through the process to help and educate the community. And so, I just want to say thank you to them as well. This resolution today is going to start the work that our community has been so desperately waiting for, and just want to say thanks to everybody for your efforts. And with that, I'll move approval of 2.15.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. I neglected to thank Senator Cortez and Assemblymember Colra for that state funding, which was really critical. Thank you for mentioning that. Thanks also to John Risto and Jessica Zank and everybody who worked so hard on this. Okay, we now have, I believe that motion included all the...
I'll include the rest of the consent calendar as well, sorry.
Good call, thank you. Is that okay with the secondor? Great. Let's go to the public. Mr. Beekman? I'm sorry, Toni, it's your job. I just took over there.
Hi, thank you that you acknowledged remaining consent calendar items for public comment time. Thank you. I wanted to speak about, there is the extension of the hybrid meeting process through November. Well, I've been trying my best to, you know, really hope that we will be considering, like, the use of mask use this fall and through holiday time. It's been reported, you know, COVID numbers are rising in England and Russia. That is usually always a sign that in the next month or so, it will start to be rising here again, and we're going to be starting to worry. And so, you know, mask use will be important, and we will be addressing issues of vaccination process with young people. And by January, just to be aware of those things, I think it's important we have good practices now, and then learning to talk about our technology policies openly, I think can really help create a good conversation for all of us, and all of us can have a place to work from and consider issues. Thank you. With my remaining time, with the SmartWave technology, there's also some bringing new mobility plans to downtown San Jose. You know, they're connected in the ways that these are, they'll be using Wi-Fi technology that will have surveillance and data collection involved. So, you know, our digital equity future has to be considering open public policies for all of these things, and how can it be, how can these things work together towards our better future? It's always important to say open public policies in the future of our digital equity future. So, thank you. And for the redistricting things, I really, really like the ideas of item 3C and districts moving east to west, and we can really work on how that can work for our...
Back to the chair?
Okay, thank you. Let's vote now on the consent calendar.
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Boy, it's musical. Okay. We're on to the land use consent calendar, which is 10.1. Is there a motion?
A move?
Move a program.
This is for those who are at home watching. This is a Milvac contract for property located on Magnolia Avenue. Is there a public comment on this item, Toni? Okay, let's vote on the motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we're rolling now. We're on to the report of the city manager, item 3.1. Jennifer?
Yes, we do have a COVID-19 update today. I'd like to turn it over to Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager, and Dolan Beckel, interim deputy city manager, and the team to provide you that update.
Here we go. Good afternoon, Mayor, council, community members. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. Joining me in the box today is Dolan Beckel, our interim deputy city manager and operations chief of the Emergency Operations Center, as well as Carolina Camarena, the city's communications director and our EPIO. And last but not least, Alvin Galang, assistant to the city manager and our lead of our vaccination task force. There we go. Consistent with the last few COVID updates from city staff, we're going to keep it focused on a limited number of items, so they have the opportunity to discuss those with you. And these are going to focus on data trends that we see with COVID-19 throughout the world, country, and locally. And then for today, we'll be jumping into kids vaccinations, boosters, and the new guidance on indoor masking that was released by the County of Santa Clara, as well as other Bay Area counties. And the next part of our presentation will be given by Dolan.
Thanks, Lee. So, good afternoon again, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public and city staff. Dolan Beckel, deputy city manager, interim deputy city manager here to present the trends in COVID-19 since our last update on September 25th. The Delta variant, the most serious variant, remains highly transmissible through most of the United States, as seen in the red shading on the Center for Disease Control, or CDC map, and remains the dominant variant in the United States. There are no variants of interest at this time, as the Mu variant has shown not to be a concern to the CDC. There is a Delta offshoot variant called AY4.2 that is getting some attention internationally, but it is not a concern here by the CDC at this time. As shown in the circle, the Bay Area counties are faring better. While some Bay Area counties are in the moderate or yellow transmission rate, Santa Clara County is just slightly into the substantial or orange transmission rate still. The overall national vaccination rate has moved up slightly for ages 12-plus at least one dose from 75.1 to 77.2. Moving on to data at the county level, the county positive cases have flattened out. They have not returned to the levels of single or low double-digit we saw before the rise of the Delta variant. Deaths per week do continue to decrease. Two of the primary indicators of the stability of the public health system are, one, hospitalizations, and two, the intensive care or ICU bed availability. Hospitalizations have moved up slightly, and the number of available ICU beds has decreased 21% from our last report. And while the ICU beds have decreased, it should be noted, the availability is trending up and down in a fairly narrow range, as this graph shows. Also on the graph shows the peak availability of ICU beds at the start of the pandemic, and it should be noted, the county does not have a large contingency should a more serious variant arise during the winter months, requiring a major surge in ICU bed availability. Since our last update, both the county and city vaccination rates have increased slightly when the denominator is ages 12 and above at least one dose. So, the city's vaccination rate has moved up from 92.5 to 94, or a 1.5% increase, and the county's vaccination rate has moved from 88.4 to 89.6, or a 1.2% increase. And later on today, Alvin will talk about our continued commitment to the ongoing vaccination drive. With the updated guidance on indoor masking guidelines that I'm going to address later, and the authorization of vaccine for kids age 5 to 11 imminent, we will likely not show these measures and metrics again, and will pivot to presenting vaccination rates for the entire population within the city or county. And that is because that is what we're going to be looking at moving forward as one of the criteria to remove these masks. This data is not inclusive of boosters, third, or additional shots, and we'll be working with the data, to present that data at the next update. The city and the county have met, and we have jointly noticed some irregularities in the county data. The county will be integrating some new data sets shortly, and we hope to be able to present that new data once that has occurred, hopefully by our next update. So, that's where we stand, and now I'm going to pass it on to Alvin to talk about the vaccination task force.
Thank you, Dolan. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, member of the public. My name is Alvin Galang, Vaccination Task Force Director. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the latest information about the city's continued efforts in supporting the county with vaccinations. As Dolan mentioned, the city of San Jose is at a, actually, a 94, I just checked the numbers this morning, the 94.1% vaccination rate, first doses among 12 and over. And so, the numbers continue to head in the right direction. The city vaccination rate continues to go up, and the cases and deaths remain low and steady. We are continuing to have a steady number of participants at our vaccination events. For example, yesterday at the Bascom Community Center, we had a vaccination event there, and we vaccinated roughly 92 participants at the Bascom Community Center yesterday. The county has requested support for communications and outreach to youth ages 5 to 11, and so the city will be supporting that request, including outreach and communications to the youth themselves, their parents, caregivers, and of course, specifically within our most vulnerable populations. And what else has changed? The expansion of approved booster vaccines. And so, the Moderna vaccine and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine have been approved for booster use. What is driving the change? Vaccination mandates. So, whether they are employer-related or event establishment-related, going to a Sharks game, catching Hamilton, perhaps even going to a bar or restaurant, these mandates are bringing people to our vaccination events for them to get their vaccinations. What else is driving the change? The expanded eligibility to youth 5 to 11. That eligibility is anticipated to happen probably around next week, or at least in the coming weeks. And then, the data showing the waning immunity of vaccines over time. Like many current vaccinations, a booster shot is recommended for maximum immunity, maximum protection, and so that's also bringing people to our vaccination events as well. What is new? Incorporating rental and housing assistance and resources at vaccination events. So, we've been working with our housing department to, whenever possible, invite them to our vaccination events to offer those wraparound services or those resources for the participants. We're also re-engaging with our San Jose Fire Department personnel to assist the county in having in-home vaccinations and assisting the county with that program. And so, with that, I would like to pass it over back to Lee.
Thank you, Alvin. And so, on to good news. A little over an hour ago, the Food and Drug Administration Vaccine Advisory Committee formally endorsed the visor vaccination for children 5 to 11. It has anticipated formal approval from the FDA. It has anticipated formal approval from the FDA. Will be coming next week with full authorizing. So that is great news. I'm going to cover a little bit of what we know of our pediatric vaccinations locally, as well as boosters. And so just wanted to give context, as one of the council members asked last 3.1, what were we looking at? And I think you'll see a much different approach from the county, Board of Education, hospitals, and the health and hospital system, whereas in last January and February, when they were planning for vaccinations, that number was about 1.5 million people that need to be vaccinated. Whereas countywide, they're looking at a much smaller number of around 160. So we're likely to see a lot of smaller locations, more formal locations, and not the mass sites that we once saw, meaning that we'll have an easier time with some logistics and a harder time with other logistics. One of the things that I wanted to point attention to was, for our own county, as well as all hospitals and providers throughout the U.S., one of the surprises in the way of regulations from the federal government was the vials that the visor vaccine is stored in. So for pediatric vaccinations, the dosage is lower, and we actually have a lot of capacity of visor vaccination or vaccines within our own county. And so the thought was, of a few weeks ago, to go ahead and use that and train injectors to take out a smaller amount. That will not be feasible, and federal government is now going to require separate vials. It'll be color-coded differently to ensure that the dosage is correct. So not like before, where we saw a bit of a lag in vaccine eligibility or availability within our locality. There will be a slight lag as that distribution system gets set up by the state, as the state is handling that for the federal government. Again, that is being created in parallel and mirrored off of the existing new distribution center that we saw later on in the vaccine efforts. So for the first few weeks here, some efforts might be more focused by pediatricians and other community clinics versus somewhere after one or two weeks, this will really open up quite a bit more. So I wanted to make everyone aware of that. The county will be following President Biden's plan and ensuring that, you know, most vaccinations take place in pediatric or family clinics, so the parents can be with their children. But the county, after extensive work with the Office of Education and school districts and focus groups, will be offering four doors locally as we go into this. So obviously pediatricians and children's hospitals will be one. Pharmacies will be another one with a lot of capacity. Community-based clinics that the county continues to put on with community-based organizations, with us supporting some of those with our vaccine champions, and then schools. And so there'll be four doors, and that is based off of research and focus group from the county where parents really wanted different types of experiences, and I know some of us with children can understand that. As Alvin mentioned, our role has really been defined by the county as wanting to continue to partner on communications and outreach efforts. They feel that the team has really hit our stride in identifying and targeting parts of the community that wouldn't have looked at this previously. And our last push, while the numbers have been small, those last few events that we've been doing to get even 20 or 30 people, has really moved the needle. And that's been deep engagement and a lot of experience with Carolina and her team on influencers and a variety of things. So some of the plans around those four doors are still in development between the county and a number of partners. It's our understanding that Friday at the Health and Equity Task Force, the 29th this Friday, the county will be talking more about sites and which schools, but they have identified over 90 school sites for mobile vaccination events. And they're going to continue to use all of the clinics that are in place now in our city to administer pediatric vaccinations. So moving on to boosters. Eligibility groups are now no longer limited to those who only receive the visor vaccination as their primary vaccination. Individuals can now choose which vaccine they would wish to receive as their booster, as mixing is allowed. We'll say, even with the expansion of the booster, in a lot of parts of the state or other parts of the country, there's been concern about those that still haven't received their primary dose. Locally, luckily, our county has purchased and been awarded a lot of visor vaccination, as well as Moderna, so we don't have that issue, but if supply becomes an issue, the county will be prioritizing those that still need a first dose of a vaccination. All vaccinations will be continued to offer at clinics, max sites, pharmacies, as well as different mobile clinics that the county will be doing. So you'll be able to go onto the county's website, choose your location, choose the different type of vaccine that you'd like, and it'll route you to one of the many facilities that is in place. County staff is currently cross-training different staff and redeploying staff from other non-critical areas for a certain period of time over the next several weeks, if not months, to maximize the amount of personnel to move people through the booster phase, as well as pediatric vaccination phase. And lastly, in-home vaccinations for boosters, as Alvin mentioned, they are looking at a variety of in-home solutions that they did for the first go-around, for the first and second dose for the boosters. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Carolina to talk through some of our new communications outreach principles.
Thank you, Lee. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I am Carolina Camarena, the Director of Communications in the City Manager's Office. So what has changed? We remain focused on communicating to our most vulnerable residents, even as we pivot to the 5 to 11-year-old vaccine eligibility. Currently, we do know that data is showing us that our Latino, Latina, Latinx youth, ages 12 to 17-year-old, have the lowest vaccination rate, and they are an audience for us. The County of Santa Clara has requested, as you've heard, continued support with outreach and communications, and we are happy to support them in those efforts. So our focus will be to provide critical communications to our non-English-speaking and most affected SIP codes, specifically prioritizing our outreach to teens and children and those who have agency over them. That means reaching parents, grandparents, and guardians. Specifically, we will need to reach those who do not have health insurance. To reach these priority audiences, we have and will continue to employ a variety of tactics, including, just this week, we've mailed out about 151,000 postcards to residents in our most vulnerable areas. And we will produce new messages and continue with this tactic as we progress and we pivot our audience. In partnership with the San Jose Public Library, we will distribute about 60,000 flyers to schools in the San Jose Unified School District. Again, we will continue to deploy this communication method, and we'll work with other school districts as well. During last item 3.1 update, you heard that WEA works. Our WEA text alerts have been very effective in reaching those who have no other way of receiving information on vaccination sites, and we will continue to use WEA as one of our most effective tactics. We will continue to do mass media to reach our non-English-speaking audiences, specifically radio and Spanish radio. We continue to promote county messages and amplify vaccine clinics and recovery programs via social media. Social media influencers are going to be key for us to reach the teenagers. And lastly, it is going to be critical that we work with our trusted community leaders in our community-based clinics. With that, I will hand it over to Dolan.
Thank you, Carolina. Moving on to the next, and one of the questions we get a lot, when are we going to be able to not wear the mask indoors? So the county did, since our last update on September 25th, issue new guidance and new criteria to lift the indoor health orders on masking. So as decisions to vaccinate and wear face coverings indoors have driven down the case rates to a plateau and driven down hospitalizations, on October 7th, health officers for the eight Bay Area jurisdictions, including Santa Clara County, updated consistent criteria to lift indoor health orders on masking. And what you'll see here is the criteria on the left and how the County of Santa Clara is performing on the right. So what we want to see as we come forward to future updates is the X that is red moving to a check mark that is green. So the criteria, there's three or four, depending on how you look at it. On the left-hand side, the transmission rate must be low and stable, and the measure is we must be in the CDC's yellow tier for three continuous weeks. The second is hospitalizations need to be low and stable, and that's low and stable in the judgment of the local health officer. And then three and four, the vaccination rate and the vaccinations must be robust, and that must be 80% of the total population is fully vaccinated. That's not 80% of 12 and over at least one dose. That is 80% of the total population of the county has to be fully vaccinated, or eight weeks after the vaccination is authorized for kids ages 5 to 11. So on the right-hand side, how do we stand? On transmission rate, the county is in the orange tier, so we're not performing to the criteria. On hospitalizations, the hospitalizations are up slightly, and the ICU bed availability is down. So in my best judgment, we have not performed there as well. And then on the vaccinations, 73% of the total population of the county is fully vaccinated. So that either needs to move up to 80, or we have to have eight weeks potentially from next week. So the 1st of January would be the soonest. We would have eight weeks after the vaccination is authorized for kids ages 5 to 11. So some things to note is California's health guidance for the use of face coverings may remain in effect after these local masking mandates are lifted, meaning that people who are not fully vaccinated for COVID-19 must continue to wear masks in businesses and indoor public places until a California health order is changed. The state also requires face coverings for everyone, regardless of vaccination status, in healthcare facilities, public transit, and adult and senior facilities. California's masking guidelines in K through 12 schools would also not be affected by changes to the local health orders, those would require changes at the state level. So that is where we stand on the masking, indoor masking. So, you know, we're looking at probably January before we hit any of the early criteria. Now, moving on to the last topic is the city response and deep dive on advocacy. So on this front, there haven't been too many new items. There are a few changes. You heard from Alvin, there is additional movement on the federal approval of boosters. And also, we have the committees recommending to the FDA to approve vaccinations for kids as early as next week. Also, in early October, since our last update, Governor Newsom announced that California will mandate student vaccines for COVID-19 once they are fully approved by federal agencies. It's very unclear when this will happen in discussions with the Office of Education, County Office of Education. The expectation is this won't take effect until at least the next school year. As previously reported as well, the White House published its six-point plan and the path out of the pandemic. One critical aspect is the pending Operational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, emergency temporary standard that will create vaccine and testing mandates for businesses with over 100 employees. This is, the ETS, as it's called, is still not publicly available. OSHA has submitted a draft to the White House several weeks ago. We have not received any update, and it is also unclear how this may impact public entities, because the language sometimes talks about all organizations, and sometimes it only talks about private sector organizations. So our IGR team will continue to watch these items closely, and will provide any updates once they are finalized from the White House. And that concludes this. Back to Lee.
And that actually concludes Steph's presentation. We're here for any questions the council may have.
Thank you. And since I just tweeted, I better make sure it's true. We're still number one in the country among big cities in vaccination. If not, I got to pull that tweet back. We'll talk later.
I have not looked at the websites this weekend thoroughly, but based on the national trends, I would say we're still the most vaccinated of the large-city top 10 cities in the United States.
Well, I tweeted it has to be true then. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the great presentation. More importantly, thank you for all the work, collaboration with our partners at the county, and many nonprofits have been working hard to protect our community. Let's go to the public first.
Blair Beekman?
Thank you. As I have been trying to speak about for the past month now, I hope local Santa Clara County governments can be giving and forgiving, and to be considering creative, good options of community health and safety for local government staff and everyday community who may feel uncomfortable with the current vaccine mandate and vaccine passports. As has been reported, about two to three people a day are dying from COVID-19 in Santa Clara County. That is a lot. With more clear understandings, I think people are still interested in current and possible upcoming vaccines. I hope in Santa Clara County this fall, local government and community, we can continue the efforts of education and choices in what to expect of current and upcoming COVID-19 vaccines, and how to better understand the virus itself. Perhaps it is to begin to learn how to better explain what can be our future health and lifestyle choices. This can include how we gather socially and our relationships with internet technology. I feel the good guidelines and open public policy practices of surveillance and technology and data collection can very much help frame and how we can better ask more open, honest questions about the science of COVID-19 and the current COVID-19 vaccines this fall. This can also work to help better define our local technology and data collection policies and practices as well. Community health and safety always should be an important consideration. To conclude and to note, a now familiar pattern, COVID-19 cases are on the rise in both UK and Russia. Open, shared communication with each other like this, and continued simple mask use may be able to help much with addressing and limiting the spread of COVID-19 this fall and winter, especially at the holiday time here in the SFA area in California. Thank you. Good luck how we can better talk about this. It's important to learn to describe the vaccine process better, and I hope we can all make the efforts to learn how to do that. I'm trying my darndest. I hope you guys can learn how to make it clear to the public what to expect from the vaccine process, what will be our lifestyle from the vaccine process. Thank you.
Back to the mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we'll get you a big phone number one.
Yeah, we shall get those. Maybe for each presentation.
That's right, that's right. I had a couple of questions. First, thank you, you know, thank you for, I know how hard you're working with the county. I know how hard you're working with all the partners.
And the information that you give us to share out in the community is super helpful. And, you know, I know I've been doing it, as I'm sure all of us have, and I've been able to go out to a few sites. And so as I've gone out to some of the sites in my district, I wanted to ask how we can message the boosters. I've noticed a couple of times where I've gone out, or a couple of locations where I've gone out, folks have come in for their booster, and they were a little bit early. In one case, he was just five days early, and it has to be like to the day. And so he didn't get a shot, and he's like, well, you know, hopefully he'll stay in touch. But how are we messaging that? Because it is really confusing, you know, to be to the day. It can't be a day earlier. It has to be exactly to the day.
Member Sparza, and we've been providing the same message and amplifying the message that the county has been putting out, but we can certainly revise that to make it a lot clearer and put it in lay terms so that it's understandable by all.
Okay, thank you. It's just this little thing that I've been noticing. And I don't know, maybe it's just an East Side thing, but that would be really helpful. I just also had some feedback. Those text alerts are still incredibly effective. So thank you. Keep it up. In fact, the last couple of times, I haven't gotten any complaints. Initially, I got like one or two each time, but it's just incredibly effective. They really work. So the last thing that I wanted to ask was, so we anticipate for the 5 to 11 in November. There's a big holiday in November, right? Families are making decisions about how to gather and what to do. Families are making decisions about how to gather and what to do. How, I guess, what do we know? How are we planning for that? Because you know, my fear is people are going to gather and you know, the little ones aren't going to be vaccinated. So how are we planning for the holidays? Or the Thanksgiving holiday specifically? Because it's the more immediate.
Great question. So we are actually planning a social media campaign right now. And we will be posting that in many languages. But we are specifically addressing holiday get-togethers. One of our messages for the teenagers, for their parents, for the grandparents and the caregivers or guardians is to say, vaccinate yourself and protect your younger siblings, cousins, et cetera. So we have some messaging that we're ready to shoot out. We're definitely going to need your help.
That's fabulous. And on the messaging, I noticed that at the booster sites or the vaccination sites, they did everything, vaccinations, boosters. Is, you know, are we messaging like bring all the kids? I mean, we're planning for that once the five to 11. I mean, it still leaves the littles, but we can do sort of the middles, right? So are we planning, hey, bring all your siblings? Because if mom has to round up the kids, take them to the school to get vaccinated, well, she might as well bring that teenager that's not getting vaccinated, right? So is that part of that messaging campaign? Once the boosters for the, or the, once the, I'm sorry, the vaccinations for the little ones comes through?
Absolutely. It's going to be a family affair.
Okay, great. That's it for me. Thank you.
I would just say too, we sort of asked that question of the county, like specific to schools. So around schools, they're going to handle it in two ways. In some cases, kids can actually bring home a permission slip and get it signed. And the vaccination will actually occur during school hours.
That's fabulous.
As, yeah, as an overprotective father, I reacted differently. But in a number of cases, they're going to have after-school clinics. Whereas the child in school, if they have older brothers and sisters or younger brothers and sisters at a different school, they can all go to that school site. So they're going to make it as easy as possible for those situations where there's just kind of one point of entry into the system.
That's great. Because I think the whole family needs to go and then that's how we'll get the scragglers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crossco.
You had a slide there that the hardest-to-reach group has been from, or the lowest rates from 12 to 17. Do we have any indication as to why that is?
You know, we've been doing a lot of research. I've been doing what I call social listening, in particular in our East San Jose communities. And I will tell you that I, what I'm noticing, and I've vetted this with our county EPIO counterparts, is that there is some misperceptions out there as to what is in the vaccine and folks not wanting their children to have it. So we will be addressing that to make sure that our, the parents, right? Folks who have agency over 12 to 17-year-olds understand what is in the vaccine. But there's some misperception that it's going to harm their children.
So I'm anticipating if that's, if that's the case, then we'll see the same thing with the two to, no, the five to 11-year-olds.
Yep, most likely. And that is something that we are wanting to get ahead of.
And you didn't, you didn't put up the census tracts or the neighborhoods where those vaccination rates are lower. I'm imagining that they're probably similar to what we saw with adults. And so they're going to be in councilmember Sparza's district, they're going to be in my district and some other areas outside of that. So I imagine that the stakeholders in terms of like the Alum Rock School Superintendent, McKinley Superintendent, they're involved in messaging and having communication or weekly cafecitos, which is what's typical on the East Side.
Yes, and I believe you'll hear more about that from the county on Friday, along with the Board of Education and different school districts.
Friday meaning the, at the, the task force that we, that we host. And then, and then lastly, the other question I have is about the booster shot. So I, I'm very confused about the booster shot, as so many of my residents are as well. But, so without the booster shot, are we, that first and second shot is null and void at that point? Is that why the booster shot is necessary?
So good question. So I definitely don't want to get that perception out there. It's decreasing potency, it's decreasing effectiveness, but it doesn't go to zero. So the timeframe in question is the six to eight months, which we've been hearing for a while. And so the booster is being encouraged by the certain segments that Alvin talked about, and he can flash them up again. But it is, so you're encouraged to get the booster because of the decreasing strength over time. But, but you, that is not to say that the first and second dose aren't providing, still providing protection against the virus.
So that leads me to my next point. I mean, if, you know, it took us, I don't know how many months to try and get to these numbers. Now we're, to me, it's like we're going right back to that campaign again. This time it's the booster campaign. And so what is the messaging that we're putting out there for folks who, you know, what does that campaign look like? And it feels like it's just going to be an ongoing campaign, but in an attempt to clarify some of these questions and encourage folks, I'd like to know what that campaign's going to look like so that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so councilmember Crossco, like you mentioned, we are kind of doing the same cycle, right? And so the focus, when the boosters came out, was folks 65 and older and those that were immune compromised. And so again, we're going to follow that same pattern like we did back in January, February, and continue to roll out in that same way.
January, February. So, so this leads me to yet another question. You keep opening up, you know, it's like a Pandora's box, sorry. So, you know, we were very encouraged when we saw the numbers, even though some of the areas that have been hard-hit were very low. And I don't know if this is a question for city manager or for Lee or any one of you, but what is then our anticipated role with the vaccination team? Because this is just going to keep, you know, this is a never-ending story, at least for now.
Yeah, that's a good question. And so around for the next few weeks and probably months, the county has asked us to continue to focus our resources and attention on the campaign. So around communications and outreach, because that's where our team has been effective. Kind of the planning, site, location, and logistics has really been done by the county office, County Office of Education and other parties. So we're going to continue on our piece that we've been really effective on and agree with you. I do think this is a campaign that will last a while. And I do think while we have some examples of what's worked really well, Carolina and Alvin and their team have done really well, especially in some of those areas where we were concerned about, the numbers have increased. I do think there's more confusion with the boosters. And does this mean me? So that's something that we need to work through in our communications and make sure those people know we're talking to them, that they're eligible and the why, which I think is what you're getting at, the why they need a booster. So it's our job to try and simplify that message and we'll work with the county to do that.
Yeah. Again, it's confusing to me. I want to make sure that I get that message out correctly to our folks. And the county has done a great job of sending those kits, those social media kits, they're great. But at some point, you know, like any campaign, you know, it's either branded like Coca-Cola and you recognize it wherever you go, or it gets old and it starts to fade from our awareness, from our, you know, just drops off our radar. And that's what I'm concerned about. And lastly, my question is, I saw on one of your slides, the different ways that you're getting the communication out. Are council offices allowed or able to, whether it's from the budget or what have you, do those text messages directly from our, from our office to our residents? And not the emergency ones, but just a mass text messaging? I've never gotten a clear answer on that, Nora.
So I believe there are different services that you can look at, and I would defer to Dolan on what those are. It's my understanding, we have not procured a system separate from the WIA, the emergency system, to utilize. It is something that we've researched in the past around community engagement activities, like a variety of community engagement activities, but it's nothing that we've moved forward with. So it's something we could definitely look into and that on things like this, council offices may have an option of using for city business type things. But yes, you're right, the WIA system would not be available.
And yeah, not the WIA, but I know that, because I've looked into it as well. I just need to know whether we have an approval to move forward with it so that we can just direct our attention to our residents and be able to direct them to either a location site or be able to alert them regarding the changing landscape. Now it's going to be five to 11-year-olds. But still be able to address now the booster. So I just, I can envision a lot of different messaging coming out of my office for my residents. I just need to know whether or not that is an acceptable campaign type of activity. So I, again, maybe I need to talk to you about that later, or city manager, to see whether or not we can do that.
Yeah, so, sorry. Councilmember, we'll follow up on what channels we have and what channels are, can be used and how far the reach is. So I know you're not talking about the WIA, but we, some of the other tools we have in the city also have limited reach. So I think we want to make sure they're effective tools. So why don't we take that and get back with a recommendation on what tools might be available and how they can be used.
That would be great. Thank you. That's it for me.
And I do want to get back to one thing. I understand the current situation with boosters is confusing. Ultimately, I think where society will get to is in the same way, there's a message about get your flu shot, we're going into the winter, there's going to be, get your regimen of flu shots, which may, which will address where we are with COVID-19. So right now, because of the, it's such a, it's a novel virus, so we don't know as much about it. So we've got, some of the messaging can be confusing. I think getting back to normal is getting back to the point where your annual flu shot message includes the things that you need to get vaccinated for, which may, which would be also potentially the COVID-19.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work and much of the progress here. As we think about the strategy for getting 12 to 17-year-olds vaccinated, I can't say I know a single peer of mine in my age group that knows how to effectively communicate to a 12 to 17-year-old in their own household, let alone in the world. And, and so have we been working with the county maybe to have focus groups to try to understand teens? Or is it, do we feel that the constraint isn't really around the parents?
Twofold, Mayor. So I do think we need to reach teenagers. The 12 to 17-year-olds do have influence over their parents and their peers. So we have a meeting with our counterparts, the county EPIOs, on Friday, and that is exactly the question we intend to ask. Have you done any focus groups for the teenagers? Though independently, we are also going to do our own informal focus groups for 12 to 17-year-olds.
Right.
And we hoping that all of you will assist us in addition to reaching out to our youth commission and asking them for their feedback as well. We've had great success with our informal focus groups. It is a cost-effective way to ensure that our messages are resonating with the intended audience. The second part of that is we must also reach those who have agency over this age group. So we have got to reach the parents, the grandparents, and the guardians. And given the demographic and our focus on our hardest-hit populations, we will continue to employ the tactics that have worked very, very well for us in the past year. And we'll add more as we learn.
Fair enough. Thank you. You know, it's been about a century since I was 16 years old, but I do know that when I was 16, the most powerful force in the universe was FOMO, the fear of missing out. And, you know, we were pretty effective, I think, working with the county, I don't know, several months ago, I remember when there was a, there was a Bad Bunny concert, we used some tickets. And I was thinking, you know, hey, if we can get Doja Cat in town, you know, could we be using arena tickets? Are we still talking to our friends at the Sharks in the arena to see if we can use that as an inducement? Because I would imagine that would be one thing that teens would really be interested in, particularly since you have to be vaccinated to get in the door.
Yes, we are. And we've actually held a majority of those dates that might appeal to our teenage population for that type of work. So that is definitely part of the work stream and trying to encourage that age group.
Okay. Thank you. Happy to help in any way if I can. So please don't hesitate to reach out. Not that I, you know, I'm speed dial with Doja Cat, but I mean with the arena. I agree that the text alerts are really effective. I appreciate that remark, Councilmember Sparza, because I get those things. And as much as I'm irritated by text messages, it's really effective. One question about our website, the Flash page or the first page, it still says, "Slow the Spread." And it sounds so 2020. Aren't we past the slow the spread days? Aren't we into sort of vaccinate and maskinate or something like that? Is there something else we should be telling people?
Good point. We will take a look at that and we will make sure it's more relevant and more 2021.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I'm told that several colleagues have their hands up on remotely. So Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. And even though I guess it's been a while since you've been 16, you still obviously know who the teenagers are excited by these days. So you're keeping up in some way. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Maybe you, maybe you can answer this and help clarify, I think, some of the confusion that we're here, that I'm hearing. And I know Councilmember Crossco was asking some questions around this. The definition of fully vaccinated isn't going to change. Two doses will be fully vaccinated and the booster has nothing to do with that. That's correct, right?
Yes, as it stands right now, Councilmember Cohen, that is the definition. And I think as we, as so, we will be switching to reporting on total population, fully vaccinated, we're fully vaccinated is the regimen that's recommended for that vaccine, which may be one or maybe two. They have not updated fully vaccinated to be inclusive of the booster. And we'll see how that evolves.
Yeah, and I suppose it can evolve. I hope that won't be the case. And my opinion, my, my understanding has been that the vaccine will be, at this point, a voluntary thing for people who feel like they need extra protection. And the CDC is telling people what categories would benefit from extra protection. But our definition of fully vaccinated is two doses. And I think we have to just, I understand that there's confusion with this new booster, that people are now wondering if they're fully vaccinated, how that'll affect the mandates, the things that we said about going to events. All of those things will be based on two doses, one dose of J&amp;J or two doses of the others. And there is no intention at this point to change the definition, although certainly it's worth encouraging people who fall into the proper categories to get boosters.
That is correct. And to be clear, the current CDC guidance for boosters is four, don't know why I have an echo, sorry, four categories. 65 and older, ages 18-plus who live in long-term care settings, ages 18-plus who have underlying medical conditions, and fourth and last 18-plus who live or work in high-risk settings.
Thank you. Anyway, I think, I just wanted to make the point that we should be clear in this communication when we start talking about boosters, that we're not, we're not moving the goalposts as far as the other requirements that we've, that we've put in place, that we're still, our primary focus is still on getting 100% of our residents vaccinated under what was the definition of fully vaccinated before the boosters were approved. under what was the definition of fully vaccinated before the boosters were approved.
Correct and agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Arenas and then come back to councilmembers here.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to start off, I always like to start off with gratitude. And I heard loud and clear that some of our previous feedback on communication strategies has been integrated, and I'm really grateful for that. One of which is, Kateryn, I think you mentioned it a couple of times, influencers and especially maybe local influencers. Could you expand on that? Can you tell me more about who our influencers are for adults and for the youth?
I would love to be able to name them all off, but I also am not in that age group anymore. And I'm happy to provide you with the list, but we do have local social media influencers. And I'll tell you about our ZOMAD campaign. So what we did was focused on influencers that were specific to areas, to our area, our local area, San Jose and the Bay Area, and who had a following of 100 or more, 100,000 people or more. So they are micro-influencers, as opposed to, say, the Doja Cats or the Kim Kardashians, et cetera. So that proved to be a pretty successful campaign, and we would like to deploy it, looking at new social media influencers to reach the 12 to 17-year-olds, specifically our Latina, Latino, Latinx youth.
And so, yeah, and so you said the successful strategy was targeting influencers with 100,000 and above?
Less than 100,000. We wanted to do a micro, yeah, micro-influencers at this point.
Okay, got it. So in, I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do we know when it's successful? With a place-based strategy, we, you know, I was able to get on the county dashboard and look at the at the wave of influence in terms of vaccinations that were lighting up as you you know, as you see, as you saw from, from the center point of vaccination site outward, you would see additional people getting vaccinated. And so we understood that vaccination, the strategies for, place-based strategies for vaccinations were effective. How do we know when this is effective? How do we see that breakdown in terms of, I think Councilmember Carrasco brought it up, we don't, we didn't see in this presentation any breakdown of our areas. And to me, that's one of the ways that we can measure success. How are you all measuring success?
Let me address specifically our micro-social media, our micro-influencers. So what we looked at, and I think a few of your colleagues might appreciate this, we looked at what the industry calls CTRs or click-through rates. So the social media influencers would post a message about having their vaccine or getting some sort of assistance. You know, here's where you can find free food. Here's where you can get some rental assistance. And if that link went directly back to our website, we can actually see an increase in web visits. The other measure that we will look at is likes, shares, comments. And based on that data, we are able to surmise whether or not that social media influencer was successful in reaching the intended audience. And furthermore, whether it was successful in having people visit our website for more information.
Got it. Well, that's wonderful. Well, let me add to that to see if this is something that could be integrated as you further your strategies in our Latinx, Latino and Latina communities, especially those that are younger. As my son is walking in with earbuds in his, on his ears and no recognition of his parents in the room. Prizes and money always speak to our youth. I mean, that's why we have so many folks subscribing to be in somebody's channel because they're going to win a prize, because, you know, they're giving away swag, because they have, they're giving away their merch. All of these things are things that, that we know work with, with our young folks. And dare I say, with almost everyone, everybody loves to win. So is that something that we could integrate with, with some of those influencers?
Absolutely. And I think Lee spoke to that earlier. We can definitely include some incentives as part of that social media campaign with our micro-influencers. And I do want to say, and I didn't mention earlier, but the other one that we have seen some success with is Spotify, specifically for the younger generation. Likely post some ads on Spotify as well.
That's awesome. I, I'm really glad to see that you are all keeping your eye on this and, and allowing us to also journey with you as you're figuring out what works best for our community. It would be wonderful to see some specifics in terms of, I don't know what a CTR is, but if that's the connection back from a webpage to a social media site. And if that is being used as a determinant of success, that it would be wonderful to bring that back to council so we could also learn from what you are all doing as we also approach our own respective communities. I think that whatever you learn is useful for us as we're always trying to push information out. And it's, it's great that we all can benefit from, from some of this learning. The last thing I was going to ask about is, I didn't see the breakdown in terms of whatever we considered successful. I didn't see the breakdown in the zip codes like we normally have. I would really like to see that once again. And even the graph on the total deaths of October, in October, I think Mr. Beekman said that they average two to three a day. I couldn't really tell what that number is on that graph.
Yeah, so.
Certainly didn't reach, none of those reached up to 50, but I didn't know exactly what those numbers would be.
Yeah, so Councilmember Arenas, Dolan here, two things. One is, our policy hasn't changed. So there's 10 census tracts that you've seen, I think 10 or 13 census tracts you've seen in previous presentations. That's still our focus. Some of the county data, because of the recognized irregularities and the new data sets they're publishing, we held off until we were, had some more accurate information. You know, we had the PO boxes and LP, so a few irregularities like that, that we're trying to get them to fix their data and integrate new data sets. And then, yeah, on the point taken, the graph showed total numbers of deaths decreasing, but it doesn't kind of show the death rate. So we can include that data in our next update.
Thank you. And I did hear you say that earlier, Dolan, in terms of the irregularities of data from the county. I wasn't sure exactly what that meant. But thank you for clarifying this. I know I said that was the last thing, but I'm, as usual, it is not. I have one additional thing. One of the things that you mentioned in terms of the deeper dive that you were all doing on the task force is incorporating some of the assistance and resources at vaccination events and sites. And I love that, that you're taking advantage of some of our local influencers. I also believe that at a very grassroots level, our influencers are those who are active in our communities and that people trust. And so, you know, I've spoken about in the past about our hardest-to-reach communities. And this is not only just about vaccinations, and it's not about testing, and it's not only about boosters, but this expands beyond that to make sure that everybody who, especially in our, in our community, who is hard to connect with, also receive information about rental and housing assistance so that they can also recover with the rest of the community. What are your plans in order to incorporate some of these local in-person influencers?
Councilmember, can you please repeat that question you broke up?
Oh, sorry. That's weird. That was a little quiet. So what I'm wondering about is how are we continuing to use our local influencers, like our active community members that have built relationships within our own communities and that people trust? And, and, you know, they're the go-to people. Because one of the things that I have made a point in, in many of these different services that we're rendering to our folks, whether it's vaccinations or testing when we first started all of this, or information. Information is going to be key in making sure that some of these folks are part of the recovery phase. But if they're not receiving the information, then we can't really say that we're doing our complete job in covering all of our community members. So and so, how are you incorporating in real life local influencers that I typically don't call influencers, but I call them, you know, like the promotora model?
That's an excellent question. And what I can tell you is that we're not just using social media influencers. We're definitely using our neighborhood leaders, our, as you're calling them, grassroots influencers. And so not only are we doing that for vaccine, but what we're really talking about is recovery. So the promotora, promotores model is definitely something that we are looking at. I recognize that part of us reaching this very hard-to-reach community, typically non-English speaking community, is through people who influence them on a daily basis in their neighborhood. It's when they go pick up their panada, at the panaderia, it's when they go visit their, you know, local nurse at whatever health clinic they go. So it is part of our recovery that we include the grassroots influencers.
Great. I'm glad to hear that because as we have learned, there's been folks who've been left out of some of the services that we have provided online, whether it's a tutoring or a yoga session or whatever it is, they're missing out from some of that opportunities to restore themselves and to thrive and for that kind of social emotional support, which is all important when we take a look at a person's health, especially when it has to do with their livelihood and if they can make the rent that month. And so I'm glad that you are thinking about that and that you're moving towards that. Congratulations on this piece of it in terms of your communication piece. I, I love that it continues to be effective. I love those, those texts that, that continue to be sent out. I would like to just see additional information that I've talked about. But thank you, everyone, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And actually, I just have one question. And it's regarding our schools and their distributions of the vaccine. Do we know whether they will be using it as a tool to require participation in after-school sports or activities? That might be one way to boost the number of vaccines in the middle school and high school population, for sure. Do we know what the schools are doing in that regard?
So we've asked the same question, and I'm hoping to get more information on that in the coming weeks. I know some school districts are very, thinking about it very aggressively, that that would be a great strategy. And then others are kind of going through, if this is going to be mandatory once the non-emergency thing wears off in a few months, is this a, is this something we want to tackle right now? And should we just be more focused on the logistics and distribution of the vaccine at our site? So unfortunately, it looks like it could be handled district by district, but we're hoping to have more information on that in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you. I would think that would be helpful to some of the schools, school districts, to be able to say that. I know there are outside organizations, theater companies, et cetera, who cater to children who require the kids now that they can be to be vaccinated in order to participate. So that's one, one way to encourage participation. So I'll follow up with some of the school districts to see what they're doing too. But thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Praz?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just wanted to tack on, obviously, on this, this data in regards to the youth, Latin, Latino, Latinx youth, 12 to 17-years-old. Just continues to be alarming, I think, but looking at it anecdotally within my own family, it has me thinking of my nephew, who was very hesitant. And I would say he got most of his, his influence from his father, who was very hesitant. And ultimately, actually, his father had, had gotten COVID earlier in the year. And I think that's given a lot of people this, this sense of invincibility of, hey, I already have COVID. I have the natural immunities. There's no need for me to get the vaccine. And then, again, obviously, there's influence that could be passed down to their children or youth. Ultimately, what got him to do it was he wanted to play football for his junior year. And so, you know, he did it. So there was a factor, a different factor that was there. But I think it just goes to show, you know, that certainly there's, there's other influences out there. I think the biggest influence, especially for these youth, is going to be their parents, right? Or some adult role model in their life. And, and that's where I think that the challenge is, is that if we still have many of them in need of the vaccine, then we not only have to focus on that 12 to 17, but we need to somehow get their parents as well, and right? So it's, it's twofold. And I do think there are some, some methods that are very helpful. Again, I would say that the text messaging has been very effective for me. I don't know if, you know, the postcards, I think Councilmember Carrasco was saying it, that, you know, at one point, some of this just becomes noise, right? And you don't, you're not really paying attention to it anymore. So you need something else to stimulate you. And I do think it's other driving factors. Clearly, what the governor has stated, that's going to be a huge factor, but that's likely not till next school year, is what we're hearing. So in the meantime, I do think these, right, that whether it's the influencers, I think that's great, especially for this, this younger crowd, but also finding another reason why they have to get vaccinated. And I'll piggyback on the, what the mayor was stating. And I was looking up for that Doja Cat. Turns out she's performed with a lot of people at what's called Poptopia on December 4th. And I actually wouldn't put it past, you know, that it would be quite a draw if the mayor threw his name in the hat and said that he would go in the booth with some of these youth on that day. So I'm going to nominate and volunteer him. But I do think that that has been helpful and could be, right? Finding, again, finding something that is, you know, going to drive youth into a place where they're, they're going to just feel obligated, or they're going to be obligated to get vaccinated. I think sports, again, was a big driver. And likely, if we polled or looked at that data, there would probably be a very high number of youth that ended up getting vaccinated for this fall's sports. And, and so just, I think, targeting that messaging, using creative tactics, finding ways to use that social media influencing is going to be much more helpful than your traditional flyers or posters that are going out, right? And, and I think it's, it's just something we want to continue to educate people on. But I think as we get lower and lower in regards to the number of unvaccinated people, which as the mayor is, right, is very proud of, and I think we all are on our high vaccination numbers, we start getting to groups of individuals that I don't think education's going to make a difference anymore, right? They're going to have heard it, their friends, somebody, their family, you know, it's no longer a secret, right? And they're going to run into more people, or they're going to know more people themselves that are vaccinated. And so at that point, I think it has to be something else, right? It's no longer the education. It has something else that is now kind of compelling them to really understand and to make that decision. We saw it happening, you know, in professional sports. We saw it happening, you know, in professional sports, Andrew Wiggins with the Warriors, right? And his statement was, I, I didn't want to get the vaccine, but I didn't want to miss out on playing basketball more. So he just sort of made a decision on, on one or the other. And again, that kind of influence, I, I think is, can be impactful. And really some of those decisions just need to be put in front of people that, that, that helps them make their decision. So thank you for the update though, and for the work. And certainly does feel like we're starting back again as we're getting to these, these boosters now and, and as we are. And I think, you know, we all sort of expected that. It's just a bit of reluctance in, in wanting to be done with this, but yet knowing that's just not the reality. So, but thanks again.
Thanks, council member. There's, we've had a lot of great feedback and discussions. One thing I kind of want to frame this is in discussions with the county of office of education, Dr. Dewan, who is partnered at the hip with Dr. Fentschere Schib in the communications. One of the things from the focus groups was inconsistent messaging was as much of a deterrent as anything. So you're, you're going to see the county being much more targeted in its messaging. So as we work with them, we're going to be balancing those things out to make sure that, that all these great ideas and all this messaging isn't actually conflicting or confusing people or, or making things worse. And the county did ask us to, to clarify that, that, that they are going to be much more targeted. There may not be as much communication like on, on school vaccination sites because they're targeting specifically that school, not the residents around the school that might, might, might decide to come. They're really targeting the parents and, and the kids. So there's, they want to make sure that the, the messaging is very targeted in terms of incentives. Yeah, we'll take a lot of these ideas back and work with them on that. But we do have a single point of contact and they have a single voice, which is Dr. Dewan and Dr. Fentschere Schib in terms of the, the communications targeted to the, the audience, which is now the, specifically the, the five through 11.
Okay, any further questions? All right, you guys survived the, the battery of questions pretty well. Thank you very much for all that important information and for the continued work. Okay, so we're on to item 3.3, which is the citywide capital improvement program annual report. Matt Kano and team are here. Welcome.
Thank you, Matt Kano, director of public works with me today, presenting the presentation. David French, division manager in public works and also present with me at the table to answer the hard questions. Deputy director Catherine Brown and deputy director Matthew Nguyen. I'd be remiss to not say that, I'd be remiss to not say that the capital program is delivered by many, pretty much every department in the city and certain departments, including public works, take extreme leadership roles in managing and delivering projects, including airport, transportation department, PRNS and ESD. Just because there's not that many seats at this table, public works traditionally takes the role of presenting the comprehensive report to the mayor and city council. And our partners and some of our partners are in the audience and on Zoom to help answer any questions that may come up. And there are several other reports or a handful of other reports that go to various committees throughout the year that provide a lot more detail, such as a regional wastewater facility biannual report, infrastructure backlog, et cetera. And on the next slide, this next table is, or there's two charts on this page. The top chart shows the broken down by city service area, the dollar value of the projects in the capital program. And the bottom chart by city service area shows the number of projects in the capital program. One interesting note on this slide is that even though environmental utility services is the highest dollar amount and the highest project total, the reason that it's the highest dollar amount is we have the massive projects at the regional wastewater facility. The reason that it's the highest project total in the bottom pie chart is we have, the quantity wise, the majority of our projects are in the sanitary and storm sewer program. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave French for the rest of the presentation.
All right, thanks, Matt. Council members, Mayor LaCardo, David French, division manager, public works. So what this slide is showing you here is all the completed projects for the last fiscal year. We, we represented by city service area. We had 64 total completed projects with a value of about $195 million. Of the 64, these are both major and minor construction contracts. Just as a, a point of reference, a major construction contract is a, is a project valued at $620,000 and above. And a minor project is below the 620 threshold. The program is, is projected to achieve 97% on time percentage, which exceeds 85% target and is estimated at 96% on budget, which is also exceeding the 90% target. And those numbers will be finalized in the fiscal 20, fiscal year 22, 23 budget. Next slide, please, Matt. Oh, I'm sorry. Looking at our awarded contracts for the fiscal year, we had awarded 71 construction contracts. 39 of those were, were major projects valued at 121 million and 32 were minor projects valued at 12 and a half million. You can see that we did have an increase in our average number of bidders, which, which is actually the highest it's been in the last five years at 4.2. However, you do see it, which is, I'm sorry, is reflected by the green line there on the, on the chart. The blue line represents our variance from our, from our engineer's estimate, excuse me. With the program targets to be plus or minus 5% of our engineer estimate to the, the lowest base bid. You can see the last two fiscal years, we had a significant decrease and it does fall below that negative 5%. This really has contributed to, to COVID in fiscal year 20, fiscal year 1920, there was a significant decrease in crude oil pricing. We definitely saw that reflected in the bids, especially for our street projects. Though the, the crude oil price did increase this fiscal year, the bidding environment was extremely competitive, as you can see with the increase of our number of average bids. And with the uncertainty of the market, contractors really were trying to secure work for this fiscal year and therefore resulted in, in lower bids than expected. This slide represents our local and small business awards. And in building our city together with our community remains one of our, the most important initiatives for the department. We do track contract awards for local and small contractors for both major and minor contracts. We did just start tracking minor contracts, local and small awards just last, previous fiscal year. So we really have two solid years of data on that. With our major projects, we've been tracking over time, which is represented by the five year chart you see on, on this slide deck here. We did, on the left hand, on the left chart, that does show year over year numbers for both major and minor contracts for the individual contracts awarded to local and small businesses. You can see that the major contracts did see a decrease year over year. And our minor contracts saw a slight increase year over year on the number of contracts awarded to local and remained fairly flat for, for the small. The chart on the right, as I mentioned, reflects our five year average. You can see that there is some ups and downs from year to, from year to year. And we definitely, there's no trajectory one way or the other, other. But it, like I mentioned, this is something that's extremely important to the department. And we continue to work to, to continue to increase this and get that into a upward trend. We did identify for this fiscal year that there were two types of projects that under, that had low participation on local and small businesses, and that was the sewer and concrete projects. Looking at those two in particular, staff has identified that it, it could be a result from not, excuse me, a, a, the number of contractors, small local contractors available to do that, that special work. And so that was contributed to the decrease. We do want to highlight a few projects for you guys. And so again, we're going to do this by CSA. The community economic development CSA is the rural 20B underground district project, which reached beneficial use in December 2021. This had a value of 1.6 million. This project installed underground conduits, boxes, vaults and cabinets for PG&E, AT&amp;T and Comcast and removed about 1,000 linear feet of overhead wires. The neighborhood services, Tamian Park Phase Two reached beneficial use in May of this year. The main aspects of this project was installation of natural turf, soccer field, all weather track, soccer viewing area, shade structures and an adult fitness area. This project had a construction value of approximately 2 million. This is definitely one of the larger projects for the city. This is the Cogen facility out at the regional wastewater facility. This is a, was a multi-year contract originally designed build contract for 95 million. It's a great achievement which reached beneficial use in December of 2020. And this project allows a regional wastewater facility to produce the majority of the power necessary to meet the daily average demands for the regional wastewater facility. It significantly reduces emissions and contaminants, which, which helps the city achieve its climate smart goals as well. It's also increases the resiliency for the facility. The transportation aviation services, we highlighted the McLaughlin Avenue safety enhancement project. This was a project valued at 1.7 million and reached beneficial use in November 2020. And this project installed median islands and trees along McLaughlin. In addition, it improved curb ramps, upgraded street lights and installed two intersections with really the main goal of calming traffic and promoting safety for pedestrians and residents in the area. For public safety, we like to highlight the fire training and emergency operations center. This is, had a groundbreaking this year and this is a $54 million project, which part of the portion of the project is funded by the Measure T program. This project is scheduled to reach beneficial use in February 20, excuse me, February of 2023. And we did want to highlight that this project is in construction and moving along. And strategic support services, we, is the city hall building HVAC controls upgrade project. This is a $5 million project that replaces the HVAC controls throughout the city, excuse me, city hall building. And this is reached beneficial use in 2021. There isn't a slide for it, but I, I did want to highlight some, some great projects that were completed too as well, which was the emergency interim housing projects, the Evans Lane project, Monterey Burnell project, roof Ferrari project, were all projects that were in response to the COVID pandemic and, and the city shelter crisis. In addition, was also the Felipe Alender project too as well. And so these are great projects and to support our unhoused community. And with that, I will pass it back over to Matt.
Thank you, Dave. I just wanted to indicate that we have read Vice Mayor Chappy Jones's blue memo and staff is supportive of the recommendation of returning. We have a community and economic development report coming up in the new year, in early 2022 on local and small businesses and we can report back on those matters in that memo.
Thank you very much. Forgive me, Matt, was that the conclusion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation and more importantly, for all the work. It's enormous amount undertaking, particularly as we consider what's going on just alone at the wastewater treatment plant. It's enormous amount of construction that has to be managed and it's been managed very success, excuse me, very successfully. Let's go to the public for comment.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. First, a thank you to councilperson Aranis, who I think described maybe 50 plus a month who were dying of COVID in Santa Clara County at this time. And that will help me with my own how to better write, how I can better report on this item better in the future. For this item, I guess the first report, my feelings that, that the, the climate smart issues for San Jose that was mentioned, that can be of help with the sewage issues and stuff, development issues. The climate smart issues, they're just one small part of a very large spectrum of green sustainability ideas we need to be considering at this time. And I hope that can be acknowledged in how we can address the future of the city charter process. To speak to Measure T issues that are on the memo, what, all the wonders of what Measure T is helping develop at this time. There is real talk among Measure T commissioners. They're trying to consider what can be a more active process, how, how there can be more better community engagement with the Measure T process, public access. You know, the work I do with surveillance and technology stuff, I mean, it has a lot of different parts to it. And one of its parts is how to create an accessibility and understanding of, of, you know, democratic rules and principles and practices, how we can work better as, you know, and function and organize ourselves well. And I know you've been considering Measure T as a, as a place to have some technology oversight before we can hopefully develop a, a more community based, specific technology oversight committee, commission. So, I mean, just to, to mention these things about what's possible for the future of Measure T oversight now, it can, can be a good harbinger for our future. We can do some good practices now with surveillance and technology ordinance things and open public policy ideas. It can offer them a good direction, how, how their committees can be.
Back to the mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the council, Vice Mayor Jones.
Thank you, mayor. And I want to highlight and, and thank staff, David, Sandra, Matt, Vic, and then the whole team for the outstanding work that you've done, working with my small business advisory task force to try to create programs and initiatives to really identify, bring in small businesses, minority owned businesses and local businesses and give them access to contracts. So I, I want to thank you for all the hard work that we've undertaken. We knew this wasn't going to be an easy task. You know, we're dealing with a situation where we have generations of benign neglect that we're trying to address. And we're going to have to use every tool in our toolkit to turn this around and bring in, you know, more firms to bid on these contracts. And so that's why I introduced this, this memo to, to relook at our discount, oh, thank you. Like old times. To relook at our local and, and small business preference and, and the percentage. We're just not getting those businesses to bid. And there's multiple barriers that are involved, but we have to figure out how we can eliminate or reduce those barriers and get more of these, these small businesses to, to bid on these contracts. So I'd like to move staff's recommendation as well as, or staff's report as well as my memo.
Motion and second. Vice Mayor, just a quick question about the recommendation, the increase from two and a half to 5%. Is that in our, our scoring process? I just want to make sure I understand how the credit and discounts work.
Thank you. And, and currently it's two and a half percent of the price. So if it's, if it's $100,000, it's $2,500. So it's two and a half percent of the, of the price gets knocked off on the bid to see who the winner is. But then we end up, we'll award the project at the actual price they bid at. So the, if they bid $100,000 and they're local and small, we evaluate their bid as a $95,000 bid currently with 5% off. But then if they're the winning bidder, we give them the project at $100,000. This is something we have not talked through with the attorney's office yet, but we would in, prior to coming back in the new year.
Okay, I am supportive of whatever is lawful. I, I just had understood in the past, we had like a scoring method for a lot of bids and, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, for, for consultant agreements, we do. So for consultant agreements, it's typically five points out of a hundred point scale. And we mimicked that in 2019, after the Measure S charter adjustment 2018. It gave us the ability to put this on our projects and we mimicked that, but we used a percentage instead.
Okay. All right, well, I understand you're going to sort it out and bring something back to us, is that?
Mayor, and also just, just to elaborate on that as well, as far as the, the legal justification, in the past, we've been able to support it because it's more expensive. in the past, we've been able to support it because it's more expensive for a local business to do business in San Jose. So you take that into consideration in terms when you calculate these particular discounts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Matt, did you want anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the suggestion here. I had a few questions. First, I just wanted to say a big thank you. I think there are a lot of successes to point to in this year's, well, I guess this wouldn't be the formal CIP, I guess we do that in June, but anyway, the Annual Capital Report. Certainly really love seeing the success around the streetlight replacements, you know, DOT and the repaving, it's wonderful to see, as well as, you know, I think that, I guess this wasn't formally part of the citywide, but the construction of the Quick Build Apartments, the EIHC communities, you know, being able to build those within a matter of months rather than years and doing so at really a fraction of the per-unit cost of a standard apartment construction. I think that was, it really dramatically set a standard in a way that now we see a lot of other cities and now the county very interested in following that model. And I just really appreciate everybody, you know, Matt, you've been deeply engaged in those efforts, and I appreciate your leadership on it, and I know many other folks in housing and throughout the organization, and I just appreciate everybody rolling up their sleeves to try to do something very different in a time of crisis, which is really critical. Sorry, I'm going to turn this off. Excuse me. I would also just had a couple of quick questions. The, I guess it's, you know, I guess the case, whenever you give us good news, we can't be satisfied with it, but I love the graph, but I think that's a repeat of what we saw on page six of the report, that the negative variance on major capital bidding, which is wonderful. But I guess that's not the same as saying the construction costs are going down, right? That's just saying the variance, the negative variance has been actually increasing, which is also a good thing, but I guess it depends, because I saw that the price for like constructing a fire station at $1,300 a square foot, I'm pretty sure that's more than they spent to build Salesforce Tower a couple of years ago. That's a very high construction cost. And I'm trying to understand, sort of reconcile all these, all this data. Is it the case that our engineer's estimate is going up? Because I don't think the construction costs are dropping, or am I missing something?
Thank you for the question. This is Catherine Brown, Deputy Director, Public Works. So, you know, most of our prior-year engineers' estimates, or our engineers' estimates are based off prior-year bids, and so typically, we compile that information and put it together in a spreadsheet and base our current engineers' estimates off of those numbers. So in prior years, when the bid prices are higher, then you would typically see those projected forward, and now that we are in a more competitive environment with COVID-19, contractors are hungrier, so they create a more competitive bid environment. And so our bid pricing, based off of those prior years where it's a higher variant, has now, it's just created this larger delta. So it's really the bid pricing based off of prior year, and then also this environment that's now created by contractors being hungry, trying to obtain work, and so that creates that larger delta variant, or delta.
I would also like to add that the past, we don't know if it's a trend yet, but in the past month, we've gotten some pretty high bids on some projects and, you know, in different sectors of the CIP, and so we're worried right now that the trend of lower bids might be ending.
Yeah. Yeah, I was surprised to see that we had such a negative variance before, which is great, but yeah, I just keep hearing, when I'm talking to housing builders or VTA or anyone else, that construction costs are rising, and so I guess it's hitting all of I know, you know, Matt, I never let this opportunity slip without asking about microgrids, particularly on our emergency-related projects. We've got, what, a $54 million construction project underway now with the Fire Training and EOC Center both underway. What do our options look like, whether it's there or maybe some of the fire stations of getting reliable energy storage in place, so that we're ready for the next disaster?
Sure, and thank you for the question, Mayor. So back when we awarded the Fire, first with the Fire Training Center, so with the Fire Training Center EOC project, when we looked at the bids earlier, yeah, it seemed like two years, earlier this year when we looked at the bids, the add alternate for the battery was really high, and we, so we decided to keep the money in the budget but not award it right now. And, but we did award the more integrated portion of the microgrid, the panel and the wiring and everything, so that is, was awarded and will be implemented as part of the construction. But in order to make it fully functional as a partial microgrid, to keep it on the grid for a certain period of time if there's a power outage, we need to buy that battery. So the money is still in the budget. We are, I'm not sure, we haven't completely decided yet whether the best strategy for the city is to do a change order as part of the current project or to wait and do a separate project at a later time. We're just, we're trying to balance the cost versus the possible change in technology for batteries. We don't want to wait too long, obviously, but the longer we wait, there may be better options out there. So we'll report back, if not before, as part of our regular Measure T updates, and I'll definitely keep you looped in on that. But the money is still in the budget. I talked to the project manager last week about this. Regarding microgrids overall, we did a study early, the first half of this year, just we wanted to make sure that we were focusing on the right facilities and getting the best bang for the bucks out of where we want to install microgrids. So we looked at 36 critical city sites, including community centers, libraries, and fire stations, and based on feasibility of installing and many other factors, there are certain ones that rose to the top, and so we had a consultant do some cost estimates for those locations. And so we'll bring that, I still need, we have, we finally, we got those cost estimates in just this month, and we do have about $800,000 to $900,000 left in the general fund to install a microgrid, and it looks like we could do a couple of projects, one or two projects with that remaining money. And so we'll be finding an opportunity to propose, I don't want to wait till the budget cycle necessarily.
Yeah, right.
So we'll have to figure out a way to propose to council which projects to move forward with in the near future.
Okay, thank you, Matt, and I appreciate that you seem to be betting on technology reducing the cost, or at least making it more feasible, which makes a lot of sense. I know we've got companies here in San Jose that are, you know, breaking new barriers, and we hope that the cost of storage is going to come down quite a bit. The electric vehicle industry is counting on that certainly. Does the future for us possibly look like some combination where we ultimately can get cheaper storage and then do, for example, sorry, I seem to have forgotten the term that's used when you don't actually buy the panels, but instead you lease them and you get the energy on a lease basis? Power purchase agreement. Had we considered that, that perhaps we could reduce our capital costs just by buying the storage and just getting into a power purchase agreement for the generation?
We haven't, as part of our microgrid kind of analysis of city facilities, I don't think we looked at that specifically, but it's definitely something we can look at.
Okay.
So I'll definitely take that back to the team as we, and Community Energy has been involved in the discussions with us too, and they may have some expertise, and so I'll, well, I know they do. And so we will definitely take that back and discuss that when we make a recommendation on how to use that remaining general fund dollars.
Okay, great. I know you're running out of money in the bond, so I just wanted to throw that out there. And then finally, super excited, I guess 92% of the streetlights will be converted LED by January, which is great to see. I understand what we'll have left are the 5,000 or so ornamental fixtures still to be converted, and I guess my question is, looking at John or anyone else wants to answer, do we have the budget in the bond to do that, or do we need to go find that money somewhere else?
I'm pretty sure we have the money in the bond for the conversion of the ornamental lights, but I will, I'll triple confirm that and follow up with your office.
Okay, great. Hopefully, we can get there 100%, because I know that'll save us money and maybe save the planet a little bit too. All right, any other questions? All right, let's vote. Do we have a motion? Forgive me.
Yes.
We do. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Arenas? Forgive me.
Thank you. Hello?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Arenas.
So thank you, Vice Mayor, for always keeping our small businesses in mind, and I wanted to just add something to the point you were making about in your memo and in your comments, I'm noticing how, and the staff, I'm noticing how there were less small businesses bidding for contracts, and I was in this workshop that was meant for Latina women who entrepreneurs, and it was from the Stanford Business Latino Entrepreneurship Initiative, but they gave some really interesting statistics that were beyond just gender-specific to Latinas. They did say that Latinos or Latinx are starting businesses at a faster rate than the national average across almost all industries, and proud to say that the Latinas were in the forefront of that growth. And when they showed this slide on the growth rate by industry, construction was at the top in terms of the increase, and it was almost at 35% increase of what it normally you see folks in this industry, and then followed by educational services and arts, entertainment, and recreation. But the one thing that they shared that keeps them, keeps entrepreneurs from really being successful, and I forget what they called it, but I'm going to call it the opportunity gap, because there's a difference between wanting, setting up a business and then being successful in it. And one of the things that they noted was that there wasn't, they don't have, Latinos don't receive from typical institutions, banking institutions, the same amount of loans so that their businesses can flourish, so they really max out at a certain rate, these small businesses. And potentially, this is what we're seeing here in terms of growth, that they, you know, these folks aren't able to compete with the rest of the folks who are in that industry, or maybe they just really shut down during this time, although I hear there is a lot of construction and a lot of costs going up along with that. So all of this to say, how are we, and this is for staff, how are we lining up with what people are recognizing as an opportunity to grow businesses such as this? If we know that Latinos are leading in the state of California above the national average on establishing businesses and specifically in construction, how are we fostering and how are we supporting that locally?
Thank you for the question. So currently, our Public Works Construction Contracting Academy does have educational seminars and workshops, and we do, and a tremendous amount of outreach to contractors in various aspects through the council offices, but also through external sources too as well. And Councilmember, I don't have a direct contact to the specific reference that you're referring to, but we would love to obtain that from you so that we can definitely reach out to that group too as well, because we are always looking to expand our outreach. We are currently kind of, we are in a pivot, if you will, on the strategy that we are trying to reach different groups of people and also to make our educational seminars more accessible too as well, which we will be talking more about in our January Community Economic Development presentation. But we would love to, we are open to more contacts so that we can reach certain groups.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I'll send this information to you, and I just found the percentage that I was trying to recall on the odds of the loan approval from national banks, they're 91% lower for Latinos in California compared to white business owners when controlling for business performance. And I'm maybe, I think that it's safe to say that if this is the case for Latinos, that this in general is the case for people of color. And so one of the, one of the ways that Latino-owned businesses that they found where it was a successful strategy was that they participated in formal business organizations. They're found, they're more likely to experience funding success. And so how are we also working with our local business organizations, especially ethnic-based?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll take this one. Yeah, we do, in the past, we had actually grants that we had given to the local ethnic chambers, and that funding, we don't have the grant funding right now, but we do, those grants typically would be used for them to hold outreach events. While we don't have that grant funding, we do coordinate with them for our seminars and training that David does. And you bring up a great point. I think one of the things that we want to look at, how we can do in the future, is to really enhance that and see how they can help us, help bring more contractors and people who are maybe ready to get started working with us to our seminars and trainings, because in the past, they have brought people to our seminars and trainings, so they've been great partners, and we haven't been able yet to see a correlation, a strong correlation between our seminars and trainings and new bidders. So maybe there's some tweak to the partnership we can do to figure out how we can find more of those people who are almost ready, and we can just get them across the goal line to help become great bidders on our projects.
I appreciate that, and I'll send this information, but this comes, these research findings come from the Stanford Latino Entrepreneurship Initiative, and I'll send this to you once the meeting ends, but I thought it was really interesting to recognize what is happening in our state and locally, and how are we directly coordinating what we do here with our local businesses and small businesses and the people who are out there. And so we know that people are very innovative, and they are, they're continuing to establish businesses, so it's up to us to figure out how we can also support them. They also had in this information, of course, the governments at different levels are the, one of the greater, largest sources of contracts for small businesses. And so knowing that who we are for small businesses, we need to make sure that we know who they are. So that was my comment. I, once again, just want to thank our Vice Mayor. I know last year, we did a disparity study memo together, and, you know, I'd like to see how we continue to really target those folks that we know have been hardest hit. We know it's the people of color, we know it's women, and so with those things in mind, and they're also the ones that are springing back into business and establishing businesses. And so knowing the information, we also need to pivot with this to make sure that they're as successful as they can be. And those were my comments. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. One last question. I'm sorry, you guys have been doing great up to this point, I'm sorry to keep you any longer. Just going back to microgrids, Scott Green, my team, mentioned to me that in the infrastructure bill, we all hope it's going to pass. It could be about $5 billion in matching grant program to harden the grid. We think there could be some microgrid money there. I think the CPUC just authorized about a $200 million budget. I know we've got a consultant who's looking at sites right now in the city and has identified sort of priority sites, but I don't think the consultant, I think it's that- But I don't think the consultant, I think it's the Vizian, that they're not actually involved in working on the funding or grants. And I'm just wondering, are we, do we have somebody who's bird-dogging those funding opportunities? Or do we need outside help for that?
We are looking at them, but probably not bird-dogging as much as we need to. And so, let me take that question back and think on it. And that Vizian agreement is actually, we have, it's a master agreement. And so, we can also look at the scope of that to see if there's a service order we can get their help on.
Okay, great. Seems like this is kind of one of those unique moments where we could go find a lot of other people's money to help us do these things. That'd be great to see. Thank you. Okay, I think those are all the questions. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen? Crossco?
Aye.
Davis? Davis?
Aye.
Aye.
That's okay. Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous. All right, thanks, everybody, for your work. 6.1 is a report on bids and award of construction contract for the Outfall Channel instrumentation improvements at the regional wastewater facility. There's no presentation. Let's go to the public first for comments. I hear, see, there are no members of the community like to speak.
Right, there's no.
Okay.
Oh, a hand just went up. Eileen McLaughlin?
Okay, welcome, Eileen.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lucardo and members of the council. I am Eileen McLaughlin with Citizens Committee to Complete the Refuge and have been watching the Outfall project since last spring jointly with the Audubon Society. We have been hoping that certain changes could be made to this project that involve lighting. Currently, the project is still recommending that there be 24, excuse me, all-night lighting on the bridge. This site is adjoining the Don Awes Refuge. It's in bay habitats. It is, you know, there's some changes have been made to the original lighting plan, but it's still going to be shining light where critters are needing to be protected at night. The lighting is said to be for safety of workers. We do not think that our workers are out there every night, nor all night. And do not understand why lights need to be on when no one is out there needing light on their work. We'd like clarification on that. And best of all, we'd like to see that the lighting plan be changed and that there be certain things changed to the color temperature of the, of the lights so that it is more protective. That, and I believe that some of the information is provided to councilmembers about that. In fact, there's a letter I co-sign about that factor by myself and Shani Kleinhaus. I'm hoping that that can be considered in a decision today that will make this project work. We need to have the monitoring that this project takes care of for the water quality. And we need safety for the workers. But we also need to use the goal and policy in Mission 2040 for Bay and Baylands to ensure the quality of that shoreline. Thank you.
Okay, I have two more hands up. Caller 5140, followed by Juliana.
Yeah, I just hope you guys take wastewater treatment seriously. Don't make it a boondoggle. And if you're going to change lights and all these things, you might want to try also, if you're going to do that for the birds, then you might want to help out our cats and dogs around here when coyotes tear them up. You know, I mean, if you're going to manage wildlife with lights or anything else, you should also think about people's pets. And people themselves with coyotes tearing everything apart here. Called vector control and everything else, but I realize it's a wastewater issue. Like I said, just don't make anything wastewater a boondoggle. Because if we can't manage our wastewater, and you guys want to focus on other things, like a train to nowhere, at least focus on this. Because you don't want your wastewater, you don't want a wastewater problem. Because if that's the case, the society's over with. So be careful how you manage it and wildlife around there and everything else. And just do me a favor, don't screw it up. Oh, by the way, let's go, Brandon. Thanks a lot, everybody.
Juliana Pendleton?
Hello, my name is Juliana Pendleton, and I'm the Environmental Advocacy Assistant for the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I would like to support Eileen's comments on the lighting at Outfall. We have been engaging with the Outfall project over the past few months, most recently sending in a letter for this agenda item. We would like to thank District 4 and mayor staff for talking to us on this issue. And also, thank Mariana Chavez-Vazquez from Public Works for reaching out to us. We look forward to hopefully having more discussions on how we can reduce light pollution, especially in our sensitive habitats. Thank you.
Back to the mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just the point that was brought up by one of the speakers. I was curious if there was staff here and if, whether they can indicate if they'd be willing to work with some of the folks that have expressed concerns about the lights. I know there's, I think I got some information related to whether they're going to be automatic or on remote and the intensity of the light. So hoping you can touch on that.
Hi, Mariana Chavez. I'm the Deputy Director for the Capital Program from ESD. So just so you know, we have been having a conversation with Audubon. I think there may have been some miscommunication just because we did that yesterday. They have been reaching out also to Councilmember Cohen. So we had a discussion with Shani from the Audubon Society yesterday. We have no problem. We talk about that. We can work with them. We agree that we could work with them on the lighting color and also on some sort of mechanical way not to have it on all the time. So that's, those are relatively minor issues. We can arrange that as part of the contract.
Okay, very good. I think that satisfies my interest and I think the interest of many of the folks on the call. Thank you. Gracias. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mariana, for your willingness to engage in this issue flexibly. We appreciate very much the concerns raised by several of the community members about the impacts of lighting on the, on the critters, as was mentioned. I did have one quick question for you, Mariana, I'm sorry, before you go too far. As I recall, there were lots of challenges around additional costs that we'd be bearing to accommodate the project that we believe the Army Corps of Engineers would build in phases three and four. And I'm just wondering, as we're trying to work with them in the water district, is there anything about this project that would change depending on what happens with that project?
No, this one is really focused on the current conditions. So there are already some problems with the bridge, some problems with instruments and all that that we have to address regardless. So this one will be necessary anyway.
Okay.
There are a few elements that we consider that could be affected, and we took those out of the project.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We hope there'll be a resolution on those issues soon. Okay. Was there a motion, Councilor Jimenez?
Move approval.
Second?
Okay. Let's vote.
We have Cohen's hand up.
Oh, forgive me. I'm sorry. Councilmember Cohen, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It sounds like the motion, in the motion, something that just sort of says that we will adjust the project to include some additional technology on the lights so that they're not on all the time, since that wasn't in the original proposal that was approved at T-PAC. I appreciate all the work that Mariana and the staff have been doing since the T-PAC meeting. I raised this question at T-PAC, I guess it was a couple of weeks ago, and asked how that was going to be handled. And they said that it would be, it would be watched over time and see whether it has an impact. And then we could add the light switches later. But since we know it can be done without much impact now, I would hope we could add the, just put it into the motion that we would either put some kind of sensors or switches on now so that we don't have to worry about it later.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Are you open to that?
I'm open to that, but I don't, I assume some of these conversations have been had. And I, so I don't know what's the appropriate language to insert in the motion. But happy to, if you, you've been following this issue a little closer, Councilmember Cohen. So if you have any specific language, I'd be happy to adopt whatever you suggest.
Yeah, I mean, I think I've heard from staff and from our conversations we had before the meeting today that it wouldn't be that, that much of a problem to put a manual switch on these lights or some equivalent solution. So maybe some language that says with the addition of a manual switch on the bridge, lighting or equivalent, or other equivalent solution to make the lights not on all the time, something like that.
So perhaps maybe the motion would, might be amended just to say modifications that will ensure protection of the ecosystem from light exposure.
That sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's okay with the second round?
Yes.
Great. Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen? Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, our final item of the day, and one I think many have been waiting for, is the SAS report on encampment management strategy and safe relocation policy. We have a presentation. And a big thank you to John, Andrea, Olympia, Reagan, everyone who's been working so hard on this very, very difficult challenge.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this full screen or are we just doing it this way? Okay, there we go. John Sisrally, I'm the Director, Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services. With me today, Andrea Flores Shelton, Deputy Director. Olympia Williams, our Program Manager for the Beautify SJ Project, or should say, Program. Deputy Director, Reagan Henninger, from the Housing Department. Go through a brief overview. Today, we're going to update on the current strategy. I know we had a long conversation about things like this last week. That was very project-specific to GRP. This is the whole strategy. So our objective here is to let you know sort of what the challenges are in front of us, what our objectives are on our work plan to be able to accomplish the directions from council as well as resource needs, including helping inform you ahead of our discussion next Tuesday on the 2nd about funding a variety of these items. So we start with this slide. We like this image because we think it conveys what we are focused on. So today, we're here about the encampment management strategy. That's not a strategy to produce housing for homeless folks. That's not a strategy that solves homelessness. It's a strategy that manages it in the community, trying to find some harmony and balance between those who are unhoused and living outdoors in the neighborhoods and the surrounding community. We use this image to really show you that what we're doing, encampment management, is really truly the tip of the iceberg. And what drives homelessness are all these other things, like our housing crisis, which everybody here is very familiar with. And encampment management does not build housing. It's behavioral crises, as we see them every single day in the street, in the parks, in our community. We don't employ a health department. This community is full of violence and trauma, both in their past and in their present. It is not always an easy community to work with because of that. They're not always trusting because of that. And we can't take away that trauma from them. We can't take away those experiences from them. And then there's things like income equality, structural racism, that have prevented many of these folks from experiencing the American dream, having any kind of generational wealth, having the opportunities that others in our community have. All of these things are out of the control of encampment management. So really, we're here to try to keep the best peace between people living outside on our streets, which nobody wants to have happen, and the time and effort and money it takes to build the housing and find the solution for them, which we all know takes a lot of time. Just a quick update. You know, there is a community plan to end homelessness for the county. Again, everybody's familiar with this here. We're, we are in that Strategy 3. And it really defines pretty well what we're trying to accomplish with this program. Improve quality of life for unsheltered individuals and create healthy neighborhoods for all. How do we integrate these two things? And that's our central challenge. In moving forward, you know, I think it's important, you know, when we talk about things like abatement strategies, that we remember or think about or try to empathize with what it probably feels like to be abated. It's a traumatic experience. And these are people who are already suffering trauma. These are people who are already in crisis. So we don't take those decisions lightly. That's why we're trying to give to you an objective way of looking at these kind of situations where we can make the proper decisions. Because there are certainly situations where a certain encampment has gotten too dangerous, things have gotten way out of control, and it needs our intervention. And sometimes, we have to disband it. And we accept that that's part of the process. But I just want to assure the listeners and the council that those are very serious conversations that we have before deciding to do those things because we know two things are going to happen. Not only will we re-traumatize the people who are living there, but we're also dispersing them, which makes it harder for us to serve them with all these services that we're talking about and often move the problem around. We're not solving it. I would also ask that you think about the staff and the contractors and our partners and our advocates who work day in and day out with this directly. They witness it up close and personal, the trauma and the human need that is out there. And it's difficult for them. And so, another one of our objectives is to be very clear. We have clear goals for our staff so that they don't feel like we're being wishy-washy and moving back and forth. We want them to feel good about the work we're doing. We hate it when we go in and we say, we're going to solve this problem, and we do something, or we bait it, or we don't bait it, and then we come back and we have to change that decision. And they go, well, why did we do all that in the first place? You know, they've worked all this time to develop these relationships with folks out there. And then that trust evaporates. And so, I just ask that you keep all of those, all of the folks involved in mind. Because it's traumatic all around. These people take that home, too. You know, trauma isn't just about experiencing it physically yourself. It's, you can witness trauma and be traumatized, right? It doesn't have to happen to you. But certainly, if you feel like you're an agent of creating that trauma to somebody else, that's pretty powerful as well. And you have to take that home with you. So bottom line is, learning to manage and live with this, right? How do we figure this out? Some of you, most of you know probably how we got here. You know, prior to COVID, encampment abatements rested in the Housing Department. Some of you may not know that in, during 2019, ahead of the pandemic, we'd been having very serious, ongoing conversations, we're actually closing in on some solutions to propose to the council around what encampment abatement should be, when it should be done, and what department it should live in. Because it was felt that housing, in their mission, wasn't well-supported by also doing abatements, again, back to the trust issue, which is really important for the Housing Department to be able to establish. Of course, the pandemic happened. We sort of stopped everything. We even, you know, we followed the CDC guidelines, as all of you know. We stopped abating for the most part, except in super extreme situations. But of course, things got bad. And so, we stood up a branch in the EOC by June. By October, we were trying to establish a once-every-two-week trash service to a mapped-out encampment strategy. And so, this is the very early stages. But by March, we came back. We got some priority direction from you around making sure we keep clear around schools and the public right of ways. We were already focused on the public right of way, which primarily means streets and sidewalks, but other, other types of right of ways. And then really, the birthday of the actual program was with your June budget. And so, July 1, it became an official program of the city. We moved it out of the EOC. It's within the Parks and Recs Department to manage. And that includes encampment abatement. And so, the bottom line here is, a big part of what we're trying to do is build a trash service for thousands of people that have no address. It's complicated. It's not simple to do. And our goal, as many of you know or will hear, is to get to once a week like regular residents get. You know, just try to hold on to your trash for a couple of weeks and see what it looks like in your house. It piles up fast. So I say that part only to let you know that, you know, we've, we use GIS mapping. We create all these maps so that we can serve all these sites. We have some 220 of them and growing. And... So I say that part only to let you know that, you know, we use GIS mapping, we create all these maps so that we can serve all these sites. We have some 220 of them and growing, and when we abate, we disrupt that system as well. So that is part of the consideration, right? Once those people disperse, now you're no longer on a route, we no longer actually know where you are, but that problem's going to pop up somewhere else. So it's not incredibly, it's not the most efficient way to go about it, but we understand there are circumstances in which an encampment can't continue to exist in a certain location. That's just part of the issue. But back to my early point, that's why we take it so seriously, just another reason. So I'm going to hand it over to Olympia. She's going to tell you really what we've been up to, and then Andrea will walk through our work plan and let you know where we're going.
Thank you. Olympia Williams, Beautify SJ Program Manager. So the Beautify SJ program is composed of several programs that work in sync to reduce blight and beautify the city. Some of these programs are housed in PRNS within the Beautify SJ unit, and others are in partner departments that work closely with BSJ to achieve goals. The core services in Beautify SJ include legacy programs such as the anti-graffiti program, the anti-litter program, and the Neighborhood Dumpster Day program. Programs that transitioned to Beautify SJ at the beginning of the fiscal year was the illegal dumping program, which came to us from the Environmental Services Department, and the encampment abatement program, which transitioned to us from housing. Additional programs that work to reduce blight across the city include our residential and commercial garbage services and the free junk pickup program. In addition to our many neighborhood associations and groups, we have three volunteer organizations that work closely with us in partnership to address trash in our neighborhoods as well as in our creeks. Two of our programs that address beautifying the city through a job training model include the SJ Bridge program, which hires unhoused and formerly unhoused residents, as well as the Resiliency Corps, which is a program for youth and young adults. While there are several programs under the Beautify SJ umbrella, today's presentation will focus on the encampment management and waste services. Last fiscal year, programs continued to remove a substantial amount of trash and debris in support of the city's goal of clean public spaces. Some of the program highlights include 950,000 pounds of trash that's been collected at our Neighborhood Dumpster Days. These events also provide an opportunity for our teams to educate our residents on how to properly dispose of unwanted items. We have found that there is a substantial demand for the, for increased Neighborhood Dumpster Days. We've collected over 3 million pounds of trash and debris from homeless encampments. It's important to note that the amount of trash will increase once we move to a one-time-per-week trash pickup model. We have also found that the cost of disposal of this trash and the type of trash that we collected in encampment locations has changed. We are picking up more tires, metal, human waste, large appliances, and other household hazardous waste items. Since January 2021, the BSJ team has managed over 197 escalated cleanup actions, which includes abatements and other large cleanups that we conduct to right-size and encampment location. Our inter-jurisdictional partners continue to provide, to proactively work with the city to address trash, graffiti, and address encampments on their property. The inter-agency work is intended to leverage resources between agencies to have a greater impact. For example, let's talk about the Story Road and 101 off-ramps. Caltrans must coordinate a closure of the ramp, notify the public of lane closures, schedule the CHP, and receive approvals from the Caltrans District Office up to a month in advance. The city needs to coordinate our resources to address the jurisdiction, to the city's jurisdiction, and clean up the area overall. Caltrans has collected over 15 million pounds of debris in the city of San Jose. Recently, the state of California announced the launch of the Clean California program, which makes a $1.1 billion investment in cleaning of California. With the Clean California funding, Caltrans will be adding six additional crews contracted through local nonprofits that focus on job training to address trash, litter, and vegetation maintenance here in Santa Clara County. Caltrans is also hiring an additional 70 maintenance workers for the Southwest region and will be hosting a job fair here in the city of San Jose. The city continues to meet with Caltrans every two weeks to coordinate and prioritize areas for cleanup. Union Pacific Railroad has also proven to be a great partner. We know that our relationship did start off rocky, but it has since improved. In December 2020, we executed an MOU with Union Pacific that outlines how the railroad will clear, will clean their property, and the city will coordinate the cleanup of its adjacent property. Since 2019, Union Pacific has removed 1.6 million pounds of trash from the rail line. They continue to come to San Jose on a monthly basis and address our priority areas. The city will also continue to work in partnership with Valley Water to address trash and debris in the creeks and waterways throughout the city. Our focused efforts to understand the scale and scope of encampments helped us to craft guiding principles for our work as part of the Encampment Trash Program. By ensuring that we target the locations where services needed most, the right locations, we will achieve an equitable outcome where services are properly aligned with needs, not necessarily where complaints are most prominent or powerful. By determining the right service or level of service, we will achieve an effective outcome where conditions have improved for all San Jose residents. By determining and delivering the right frequency of service, we will maximize the efficiency of this program, which when combined, all lead to a visually clean city. This is an example of a challenging encampment site. We have many of these throughout our city. First, it is located along a sidewalk that is next to a private business property and tends to have a substantial amount of trash and debris strewn across both areas, which requires additional coordination to address. There have been fires at this encampment location. There are also complex behavior issues that we must coordinate with outreach services or mobile crisis and potentially escalate to the county to address. While the goal is to take good care of our housed and unhoused community, these types of encampments do impact the quality of life for the neighborhood. In this example is being shown, the encampment is directly across the street from a neighborhood. This particular encampment has been abated multiple times and receives regular trash service every two weeks. Here is the photo of the same area once it's been abated. We have found that areas like this tend to be re-encamped within a few days of an abatement. To address re-encampment of an area such as this throughout the city, we're exploring different types of deterrents can be used, such as boulders. The Beautify SJ teams implemented an internal performance target of 75% for on-time trash pickup services at Tier 3 encampment sites. These are our most challenging sites to address, meaning that Tier 3 encampment sites would receive services on schedule at the right location 75% of the time. The chart illustrates the challenges that the team can have in delivering consistent services due to both internal and external factors. These factors can include large abatement projects, inter-jurisdictional cleanups, and internal staffing and equipment challenges, such as the dip that you see in June of 2021. We will continue to analyze performance data collected through the end of the calendar year to develop overall program performance and outcome measures. Staff continue to refine the encampment trash pickup model and implement council direction and recommendations, including analyzing illegal dumping throughout the city to better understand its nexus with encampments. Last fiscal year, the program experienced a 37% increase in illegal dumping collected from the previous year. Since January 2021, the illegal dumping program has collected over 4 million pounds of illegally dumped items. However, there are still several items that aren't being collected since they are not reported. The illegal dumping that is collected by the team is mainly what is reported, mainly through the San Jose 311 app. There is a significant amount of dumping throughout the city, as I stated, that still goes unreported. To address this, the department does recommend adding an illegal dumping strike team that would proactively address trash in areas that are most impacted by illegal dumping. Now I will turn it over to our deputy director.
Good afternoon, Andrea Flores Shelton, Deputy Director, PRNS. I'm going to walk through our work plan, as John had mentioned. What you see before you are encampment management objectives. Per the city roadmap priority, we've developed four objectives, which will drive the work plan and key results. To achieve these objectives, we must continue to commit to build the infrastructure for effective and efficient service delivery. We must move forward in understanding where we will manage encampments in the short and long run, and meet both the human and environmental needs in a very dynamic context of systems within systems. Olympia already touched on the recent programmatic results from the first objective, and in the coming months, as our management and analytical teams come onboard, we will deliver performance metrics 2.0 that will iterate on the way we currently report. So in addition to the volume of trash collected, we'd like to include cleanliness ratings that will provide a gauge of how well we're doing visually, and adopt an approach for understanding perceptions from a variety of stakeholders and residents to gauge whether we are meeting the expectations of a cleaner city. Our next objective is to create setbacks, to reduce risks and ensure the safety and quality of residents that are housed and unhoused. Current resources are dedicated to abating in public right-of-ways and school buffer zones. Between now and April of 2022, a major piece of work is studying additional priority locations where encampments will not be allowed, analyzing the setback lengths and the implications for prohibiting encampments, including the resources to enforce them. Based on current resources, including all of these setbacks proposed, are not enforceable. So analysis will be considered within the context of the '22-'23 budget process. We are interested in hearing from you today on the setback priorities so we can begin the study and come back in April with recommendations. This objective is to identify sites where we would provide encampment trash service in both a passive and aggressive approach. It is passive because the first step is completing the previous objective, to understand where the setback priority locations will be, and then reveal the default locations where services would be delivered. While we do not consider these potential sites sanctioned, these possible sites would not be prioritized for abatement unless there are significant safety issues that need to be addressed. So in addition to this analytical way of backing into sites, there's a significant will to identify land and resources for safe RV locations and other partnerships willing to host tents and lived-in vehicles. This aggressive approach is being led by the CMO's office in housing with the support of the mayor, council, and other stakeholders. Granted, none of this will be easy. It will take courage and the will to strike a balance that our unhoused people belong somewhere. 16, sorry. Where am I? Thank you. This objective, and our final objective, could arguably be the most important, and it is to connect people to the services needed to survive, stabilize, and ultimately thrive. In the coming quarter, Housing Department will finalize the contract for SOAR services to continue providing hygiene, laundry, and housing connections at key encampment sites. Funding will expand the number of encampments with these enhancements. Housing and Beautify will use a data-driven process as well as stakeholder engagement to ensure that SOAR and Bridge services are located in areas where they can be most impactful. And in addition, we're working to strengthen our partnerships within the continuum of care to develop warmer handoffs with clinicians, employment opportunities, and other safety net providers to meet basics people, basic, people's basic needs and to prevent harm and reduce premature death. So we have a lot of objectives to complete this year and beyond, but today, there are many doors to submitting encampment complaints and abatement requests, and honestly, Olympia Williams inbox and cellphone can't take it anymore. So joking aside, one of our many goals is to create, is to develop a clearer, well-understood workflow and systems with our internal and external partners. This includes the how, the who, and the why of encampment management, and importantly, the final decision on whether to abate or not to abate, and how that decision was arrived at, based on health, safety factors, which could range from life-endangering conditions to one's inability to comply with the Good Neighbor rules that are meant to maintain cleanliness standards. Also, the sheer volume of trash being collected and the sorting and disposal process can be overwhelming to our new team, seeking to meet response times and return to the field. We're working with partners at DOT and ESD to address these downstream challenges. Other systems working with its own complex issues is the Behavioral Health Services System and the adult reentry of people moving back to society from incarceration. As Olympia discussed, our Tier 3 field teams encounter residents with complex substance abuse and mental health behaviors. We work with them to a point to ensure clean spaces, yet when we find someone who has a pattern of being harmful to themselves or a chronic burden to our surrounding neighborhoods, we find our options are severely limited. So we are in contact with the county to get an update on the implementation plans for Laura's Law and the assisted outpatient treatment program. We're also connecting with the county reentry program to ensure housing placements prior to release when possible. So among these systemic challenges, PRNS and housing is committed to strengthening our partnerships to build a connected holistic system of systems. So moving on to the, to meet our current urgencies, we are here, we are really excited to tell you that we are working with OER and HR, who have shifted their staffing resources to help us fill the newly-approved positions. We are pleased that we have an accelerated recruiting and hiring timeline, and we're looking to fill two dozen critical field positions in Beautify, and we are on track to fill them by December. Once filled, we'll be able to train teams to increase encampment management, excuse me, encampment trash pickup to weekly and to make more progress towards performance This chart shows the status of the budget actions and plans. You'll see that the adopted budget allocated $12.5 million to Beautify operations and the PRNS consolidated model. We also submitted a request for $4.6 million that we'll consider in next week's ARP council discussion. And as was mentioned, we plan to draw down $12 million of the $14 million allocated by the state to San Jose for the Youth Workforce Development Funds. These funds would be used to continue the resilience corps and a focus on job training in the space of environmental stewardship, park maintenance, and trash removal in our direct discharge areas. This details our ARP requests that will be considered next Tuesday, and in particular, we're seeking funding for increasing encampment abatements with our inter-agency partners, which is crucial, crucial to address waterways and highways, as well as a strike team for proactive cleanup of illegal dumping. In addition, we also want to note that we are coordinating the proposal to submit to the state's California Clean Funding for strategic Beautify projects, which could bring in an additional $5 million per proposal. So John and Olympia have talked a lot about the experience of both our unhoused and our, and our staff, and I just wanted to point out, over the past year, we have had several of these large abatements that Beautify has focused on, and granted, they've diverted attention from regular encampment service, yet we have sought a, we've still reached our 75% performance target, so the team is to be commended for that. But these large projects take a substantial amount of city time to coordinate, plan, ensure constant communications both inward and outward, and carry out the work. These teams have cleared the encampment at Felipe with Caltrans, also provided technical assistance at First and Component, coordinated with Valley Water at Coyote Creek and William Street area, and have worked to clear encampments in preparation for new trail projects. These are very labor-intensive projects. Since I joined the team this summer, a large unanticipated abatement project of the 40-acre site at Guadalupe River Park and Garden has been planned, coordinated, and the first phase, the first two phases have begun. The team has coordinated abatement and removal of approximately 1.1 million pounds of trash and 24 inoperable vehicles. I want to call out our partners in housing and airport and our contract partners who've provided an enormous amount of time to meet our federal obligations. I've been incredibly moved by the dedication to the San Jose Way of leading with heart, building trust and rapport with those who've been let down for many years. And in the face of these extraordinary circumstances, the team has, has the heavy job of persuading and ultimately directing people to move along and leave their homes when there isn't always a housing option available. So I'd just like to call out and thank my partner Olympia, but especially Sandra, Vanessa, Paul, Irma, John, Armando, and Alex, who you see here, who are leaders in this heartwork and physically demanding work while, again, picking up trash at 200 encampments across the city. the city. So what will we be getting done in the next 90 to 120 days? We are urgently accelerating our opportunity to fill 28 vacancies to implement weekly trash pickup. And as we add people, we are outgrowing the central service yard. So we are also planning the move of the Beautify SJ team from the central service yard to Kirk Community Center, where we are also pleased that we'll be able to have a community-facing building to engage with our volunteers and anti-litter partners. We'll also be developing Performance Measure 2.0, again, moving from just outputs to ratings and perceptions, doing the geographic analysis of the proposed setback sites and services, working with our interdepartmental partners to educate our folks on abatement protocols and workflow, and again, leading the coordination of the Clean California application. So a few communications that we'll be bringing forth to you. You will be getting a response to the Cleaner San Jose memo in the coming month. And as always, we bring the annual Beautify SJ Program memo to you in February through NSC, then to council in March. And then we will be coming back to you with our recommendations for setback sites and services in April of 2022. I do want to, you know, again emphasize the urgency to our work to achieve a cleaner San Jose and want to thank the many parts of this organization that are supporting the progress of this roadmap priority. And we are done, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate the presentation. Thanks to everyone again for their great work. This is hard work, and it's not easy. So thank you. But let's go to the public.
I currently have three hands up. The first one is Gary Cunningham, followed by Brian.
Yes, I'm Gary Cunningham. I'm Neighborhood Commissioner for D1 and President of Strawberry Square HOA. I am not representing the Neighborhood Commission on this matter. I'd like to acknowledge Director Cicirelli and the staff for their efforts in dealing with this issue. The Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services Department gets tangible results as a result of their efforts. I've worked with Program Manager Olympia Williams in dealing with some of the homeless encampment locations and seen the results of her efforts. What's missing in this scenario is Santa Clara County, and I've expressed this at several other meetings I've attended on this matter. The county does not engage in this issue to the level that San Jose does. San Jose does most of the work in dealing with the homeless and spends millions of dollars. San Jose is the focal point in the county for dealing with homelessness. Santa Clara County and the state need to provide the resources for San Jose's program. And San Jose needs to be aggressive in obtaining county and state funding. And please, you know, don't play nice. Get the resources. They are not really doing the work that San Jose is doing, and you need the resources. If you're going to continue to the level that you are, San Jose needs the resources. Thank you.
I have Brian, followed by Blair.
Well, I'd like to, first, I agree with what that gentleman said. And I don't have any words for people who, the people who do that work are blessed. And this may be a little bit off task, but just for a few moments, remembering all the people who are unhoused over the many years that have passed, often alone and afraid and not knowing where their next meals come from. And thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Blair Beekman, followed by caller 6910.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I wish some of our regulars were here today for this item, Robert Aguirre, perhaps Sandy Perry. This is important stuff, and I suppose it's a bit uncomfortable with what's been going on with the housing issues for the past month. I hope, you know, we can get into it, and I think something really good is a brewing and possible with, I mean, we're dealing with much new subsidy funding coming in from the state and federal level. It's how do we learn how to work with that money and work with it well? You're considering ideas of this item and what I think can be the future of local government sponsoring of encampment sites and small encampment sites. Good luck in how you can work on this. This is an issue that Robert Aguirre and Sandy Perry have been working on for a number of years. The safe parking ideas have been a very interesting, good beginning example of how such a programs can work and work well. And, you know, I just said, good luck to ourselves how we can work on this. And to have, you know, a healthy place to be staying with checkups from government persons who can be of service and help and can coordinate things well, that can be an important feature for our future, a feature for our future that I think we need to, you know, I hope we really, we want to consider that. That's how people can be healthy and stay healthy and connected. Thank you for the dumpster day things. I think that's a great way to connect all parts of the community of a neighborhood, basically, and have great Saturday mornings where you can try to talk and learn things about each other, different groups of people in local neighborhoods. Good luck in all these efforts.
Caller 6910, followed by Roland. Star six to unmute.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
First, I'll start off by saying that I support the Cohen memo. I would just like to include porta-potties with that as well as water, meaning the wash stations and drinking water, particularly out at this hellhole that has been created over at Spring Street. I also wanted to say that SOAR services are completely and totally useless when they, somebody has to have complete and final say. SJPD is out there harassing people. Vehicles are towed, tickets are given. This is why we support humanitarian zones, not SOAR sites. If there isn't one agency that has total oversight over them, then it doesn't make sense. Housing can say, it's a SOAR site, and, you know, we're giving people more services, but if SJPD is out there writing tickets and the, sorry, the ticket people go out there and give them tickets all the time, then it doesn't do any help when they're, if they're being harassed by multiple agencies. Then housing doesn't have final say. It doesn't help people. People just leave. I also wanted to make a point that unhoused people are not a monolithic group. They are not the homeless. They are homeless people, and I think people is a word that people always forget. I wanted to ask every council person, for anything you're going to say today and for any proposal that you're going to push forth, how many unhoused people, currently unhoused people or very recently unhoused people, were involved in your proposal? How much of their input did you ask for before you created this proposal? Because I don't think that many of you are using that. You're coming up with your bright ideas, and you're not including the voices of unhoused people.
Roland, followed by caller 5140.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is Roland. You know, I was really wondering if I was in the right meeting because the title I saw here was encampment management strategy and safe relocation policy. And all I saw is basically is, you know, basically kicking people out with any kind of plan and, you know, picking up trash. And I think where we need to go forward is to start by saying, before we start kicking people out, where are we going to put them? And, you know, if they got a trailer or whatever, maybe we can find them a space somewhere, you know, with a dumpster and, you know, bathrooms, and we give them a 12 by 12 or a 20 by 20 or a 12 by 20 spot or whatever it is, and tell them, you know, this is going to be, you know, your home for, you know, for the time being. As long as you all understand this is not going to be permanent, but we are all working together to find permanent housing for you. And this is what we need to do first. That's got to be our top priority. And then once these people relocate to, you know, whatever it is, you know, with obviously some kind of a triage, because not everybody is suitable for every 20 by 20 spot. Is, now that's a train of my thoughts here. But anyway, we've got to focus on that first. Relocate these people in a humane fashion, and then once they move from wherever it is they left the trash behind, then we move in, all the cleaner parties and everything, we start cleaning up all the trash, and we start putting measure in just to make sure the trash doesn't come back. I hope that what I said just makes sense. Thank you.
Caller 5140, followed by Gail Osmer.
I mean, I don't know what we're going to do with this situation of homeless people and the parks and, you know, I can tell you one thing. Park Police and San Jose PD, they're usually not harassing people who don't look like they're going to pay the fine or the ticket for dog off the leash or cigarette or open container. I mean, I really see them go to work at the Rose Garden. I mean, you want to, you want to see some TJ Hooker meets Reno 911? Go to the Rose Garden, see what they do there. You know, you got a guy there trying to enjoy a glass of wine with his girlfriend in between the rows of the roses. And, you know, here they come, right? Here they come, I mean, chest puffed out, ticket book in hand, you know, waving that ticket book, pointing it right between people's eyes. I've seen it. But man, I've never seen it when there's a bum there sleeping, causing, oh, those guys are long gone, not going to get near that guy. Not going to get near him, not going to, they're not going to want to have to hand him the ticket book and have to touch it and the pen and, ah, they're not going to do that. Park Police and San Jose PD focus on easy things. And really, what everyone has to do is make these parks better. And these people who are causing real problems, like shooting heroin, right, puking, trapping all over the place, they need to be, you know, escorted off. But you guys, there's no way San Jose PD or the Park Police, the Derek Siobhan Division, I call it, are going to do anything because they don't want to have to touch those people who, I mean, I wouldn't want to do it. But, and these guys get paid so much money, I mean, they're not going to be with those. They want people who are going to fall in line.
Gail Osmer.
Hi, everybody. It's good to be back. I'm here because I want to look at all of you and look you in the eyes. Number one, Beautify San Jose is the best thing that ever happened to San Jose. Thank you, Olympia. You and your team have shown so much respect for our unhoused community. They are the best. I'm here to talk, I'm very nervous, I don't know why, it's been a long time, about Phase Three at Spring and Ashbury and the despicable situation the unhoused are forced to live in. You all have, there's over 250 folks living there, close together, on top of each other. There's biowaste all over the place. There's trash all over the place. No one, and I mean no one, is doing anything about it. You all knew this was coming, and you choose to ignore it. Let's just debate Phase One and Phase Two with no place for folks to go. This is a health emergency. We have to do something, you all. You're not doing anything. Porta-potties now, not next week. I know we needed to put porta-potties. Why didn't Housing know to do that two weeks ago? We need smaller dumpsters. We need to get them in there now. You talk about Strategy Three, nobody is doing anything for their life. They're not doing anything for the quality of life. Time's over. I would like to ask you, Mayor Lucardo, if Friday, you have a half an hour, ask McKenzie to set up an appointment. I want to take you to Phase Three. I want you to walk with me in the dirt, in the mud, and talk to some of these people, which I did yesterday, handed out tons of warm clothing. Please, somebody, nobody is listening to the people on the ground. You have people sitting behind their desk doing nothing. You listen to what they have to say, and you believe everything they say, but they're not on the ground. Please come out with me on Friday if you can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gail. Thank you to the members of our community for speaking out. Okay, we'll go back to the council now. Councilmember Mayhem.
Thanks, Mayor. Gail, thank you for being here as well. Appreciate your comments. Thanks to staff. I know this is not a situation anyone wants to be in. And John, I really appreciated your opening comments. I know you all are trying to lead with a lot of compassion and trying to figure out how we better grapple with the situation in a way that's fair to everyone and respects the rights and needs of everybody in our community, and there's certainly no simple answers. So I appreciate how thoughtful you all are being about our forward strategy and the complexity of the situation. So thank you. And Olympia, I have to especially thank you. We've had the pleasure of working together through the Neighborhood Commission, and we certainly call and text more than we should, but I appreciate how responsive you've been and look forward to the day when we're no longer texting you. So thanks for everything. I did, I wanted to try to outline a few of the points that were in the memo that I co-authored with the mayor and vice mayor, just lay out some of the rationale for those. First, though, just since it came up, I don't know Reagan or anyone else if there is any update on the Phase Three that Gail referred to, if there's any thing specifically on that that we might share with the public at this point? If not, I can keep going.
Phase Three is not scheduled to take place until 2022. We had planned to start Phase One and Phase Two and to end that before the holidays, before Thanksgiving, and in anticipation of wet weather, which has come a little bit earlier. But Phase Three is not to start until probably maybe February, March. And we have discussed that we do want to do some cleanup around the river and the waterways to clear out some of the fire debris, but we will not be moving people.
Okay. Good to know. And I know we're not focused on this specific issue here, but is there any update on porta-potties or other facilities in that area?
Yeah, I can just say briefly what the Housing Department and the County Office of Supportive Housing is doing. We have weekly service coordination meetings of all of the service providers who work with individuals in that area, as well as some folks who aren't currently working with clients there, but we would like them to. So Home First, our primary outreach service provider for that area, is there five days a week. Valley Homeless Healthcare is there one day a week. We've brought the Behavioral Health Department at the county into the fold, and they have started doing outreach to that area to work with specific individuals that we have identified that need that behavioral health support. And with regards to porta-potties, we are adding porta-potties. It's just a little complicated with our PO, but we are making changes to that, sorry, our purchase order with the company that's providing the services. And it's a little bit complex because we're now involving a biowaste service provider, and it means changes to that purchase order as well.
Thanks. Really appreciate your efforts there on the update. So just on the broader strategy, just to go through the four recommendations in the memo that I put forward with the mayor and vice mayor, the intention of the first is, I think it's excellent that we're accelerating hiring, and I know we've had a lot of offline conversations about the importance of that. So the spirit of the first rec is really just to ensure that we have a checkpoint early next year if we think we need it. So it's not meant to create a lot of extra work, but if we feel that we are not on track to filling those roles, obviously hiring is the critical path to executing the strategies. So would love to, at your discretion, refer an update on what else we can do to escalate our efforts if we're not on track, whichever subcommittee or to the full council. And John, I don't know if you want to comment on?
I can have a quick one there where we can kind of coordinate two things. We are supposed to be back in front of you January 11th on the GRP site, but we can, we can throw that in there and just give a quick update. We got there, we didn't, you know, and then, and take it from there. So maybe So maybe two things at once.
Perfect, that, that sounds great, more efficient, awesome. And then the second rec is the one that personally I'm most excited about, which is the idea of, you know, considering adding some trainee roles that might allow us to hire people faster and specifically from programs like San Jose Bridge and the Resiliency Corps. And give people that next rung on the ladder of their career path. And maybe also enable us to fill roles faster and sort of a win-win, creating continuity for some of the folks who we've recently created work opportunities for, allowing them to progress in their careers and allowing us to fill critical roles. So understood that there could be some complexity there, but would love to at least have you all consider that possibility because it seems like an exciting opportunity to do good in both ways. Accelerate hiring and create more opportunities for some of our more vulnerable community members. And then on third, and in my mind at least, this was really specific to the setbacks that you are currently enforcing, though I know you're considering, will consider in the future, expanding those. The current policy does not include vehicles, which initially I thought made sense. I wanted to share though, that we've had examples of schools, a particular school in our district for students with special needs, that has been significantly impacted by vehicles right in front of the school. And they are not currently included in that setback strategy. So the recommendation here, if it passes, is to at least consider the role of vehicles in that policy. And also consider exemptions. For example, if a family with children who attend the school are there, maybe that would be an appropriate exemption. But I'd like us to at least, again, if it passes, consider the impact of long-term vehicles right next to schools, which to me at least are kind of the spirit, the spirit of the setback around schools was to create that right of way and protect the path to school for our kids. And I think not including vehicles may not have been the best decision. So I'd love to at least have that conversation if my colleagues agree. And then finally, was also really excited to hear that you all are considering the creation of a team focused on intra-agency coordination. Obviously, super critical, was referenced in the presentation. And just wanted to highlight, I know we've, we've explored this in the past, but if at all possible, you know, if those other, any of those other agencies are open to forming memorandums of understanding, memorandum of understanding that might enable us to have a more coordinated and comprehensive approach, where it's possible, where it's safe, where we have the ability to clean sites owned by other public agencies, where we can also be compensated for it. Would love for us to then move forward with exploring actually setting up those relationships, which I know we've explored, but your memo sparked that for us again, given that you are looking at the creation of a team on intra-agency coordination. So just of those four, John, thanks for the comments on the first one. Just, I guess, wanted to ask you if you had concerns with any of the other three that we haven't discussed yet?
Thank you, councilmember. On number two, you know, establishing this pathway to jobs, that is also something we're very interested in for a variety of classifications. It's also something we were working on prior to the pandemic, but had to put it down. And right now, so we're targeting Conservation Corps members and Resiliency Corps members. In fact, we have, we have vacancies coming up where we're going to go and sit with them and do a workshop with them and walk them through applying for a job with the city. And we're going to tell them what these jobs are about and what they can, what they can expect in these jobs, but that leads to a job, full-time job with benefits for these young folks. So we're excited to sort of mine that group. And I don't see why we wouldn't extend that to Bridge. Bridge does have a pathway to jobs. It's probably, it's probably not as straightforward as what I just described. And I don't know if Reagan might want to comment on that. And then I think the vehicle setbacks are fine. I know, I know we're having RVs move outside of the 150 feet anyways. Generally speaking though, if an RV is on the street and not within a setback and they're not causing problems, they're not throwing trash out, they're not being drunk and running around or breaking glass or causing problems, we're not moving them.
Right.
And then number four, so we're happy to, to look at that. What we are asking from you as a council though, is your opinion on what we should be focusing on first in terms of setback? We had several up there, several ideas, everything from a playground setback to the creeks and streams and some kind of setback there. Those are big pieces of work. There's smaller pieces like keeping folks out a certain distance from hospitals and things like that, that we can probably absorb as the team staffs up. But those two in particular are very big projects that would require coordination, particularly along the waterways, of course, with our friends at Valley Water. The last one is interesting. So we've actually tried this in the past, we've asked that question. We're happy to ask the question again. If I'm, if I'm a betting man, I'm betting we get there perhaps with Valley Water. I'm not so sure about Caltrans and you, and you, oh, sorry, Union Pacific Railroad. They have very specific requirements about being on their property, you know, train schedules and trains running down the track. They don't, they don't want us on there at all. That's been the source of, of a lot of consternation in this city for a long time. And in fact, we are the first and only city in the nation to get a memorandum of understanding with them for 10 years to do a better job of cleaning that space. And they have been doing a better job, I will say. The Caltrans, similarly, you know, they have to close the off-ramp or close a lane of traffic or close the shoulder on the freeway. And you've got cars flying by at 80 miles an hour. And they have a relatively substantial bureaucratic process to get through, even to approve a project. We do have agreements with them to sort of do continuous work at certain places. And Olympia can give me more details if you're interested in knowing more about that. But it's not been our experience when we've asked in the past that they're okay with just writing a check to us. So we're happy to go down that path. I just don't want to have huge expectations that we're going to get all three.
Yep.
And those are our three major partners when it comes to this.
Understood. And I'll just throw out there that our office has had a working group with a number of different stakeholders, including Valley Water, just focused on creek cleanups. And they've, at least our office, expressed some interest in better coordination. So we're, we're hopeful, but knock on wood and understand that's, that's not a simple ask, but would, would love to continue to pursue the possibility.
Yeah, and I should add, I forgot, we're, we're in the process of redoing our MOU with Valley Water. We actually have a current one, but we wanted to define roles better. So the timing on that's actually pretty good. The MOU is open and we're in discussions actively. So, like I said, that might be the one, if I was betting, that's the one I'd bet on, but I'm not even betting on that.
Yeah.
We'll just see.
Understood. Did you want to chime in, Mayor?
I was just going to suggest, you know, with regard to, say, VTA or Caltrans, if we can help to elevate the conversation in the organization, happy to do so. John, I know you guys have been trying this in the past and beating your head against the wall. So we've had some success in the past working, you know, with board members and so forth. So be happy to do that, just let me know.
Yeah, and we're happy to engage you. In fact, the reason we have an MOU with UPRR is because the council engaged. And they decided they want to do this. Like I said, we're the only city in the country that has this kind of agreement with us. But they're very adamant about the don't clean it and bill us thing. And remember, they're a private company, so, so it's not quite the same as dealing with a government agency.
Right, understood. Okay, thank you. And then I also wanted to thank Councilor Cohen for his blue memo, which I think came out earlier today. And I'll, I'll let him describe it. I did want to move the memo that I co-authored with the mayor and vice mayor and include at least recommend, include Recommendation One from Councilmember Cohen's memo. And then on two and three, I'm certainly open to supporting them, but would love to hear from staff, the feasibility of those recommendations. Want to make sure we don't tie our hands too much in being able to implement the strategy. So I'll just move our memo and then rec one from Councilmember Cohen.
Okay, motion second. I assume you want to hear from staff now, so you could?
Yeah, unless, maybe we could have Councilor Cohen outline?
Yeah, okay, perhaps.
Thanks.
Councilman Cohen, do you, do you want to weigh in now, since this is sort of on the table?
Since it came up, I guess I'll weigh in now. I mean, I guess we'll let, we'll let, just like he's done for the recommendations on Councilmember Mayhem's memo, I'll let John or whoever is best suited to weigh in on, on the items on, on my memo from this morning and see what their thoughts are. I just want to start by saying, you know, we all have, we all have these, you know, hear about these spots in our district that we really want to get taken care of or we want to have people moved from. My concern, and I think I said this even, I don't know if it was last week, the week before, when we were dealing with the fence issue, is that we seem to often, you know, rush into doing more planning for how to clean something up without having a disposition plan. And, and so my memo is just to make sure we have some thought into where people are going to go as we, as we abate, as we clean sites. And so it's important to, you know, for me, not, not to, not to add to our list of places that, that we think need to be cleaned before we have enough ways of, of ensuring that that's not just moving the problem around causing us to have to go back to the same site multiple times. I think it's important for us to have that sort of comprehensive strategy. And a comprehensive strategy includes making sure that we've coordinated shelter and housing and parking for people, especially if we're going to add safe, you know, moving, moving vehicles as part of the same strategy as was in the memo that, the first memo. You know, moving vehicles and having them drive and park in front of a home or another park or another location, because we don't want them in, because there's a policy about certain locations, isn't, isn't, you know, necessarily going to solve our problem, it's just going to move the problem around. So I just want to make sure that we have that comprehensive strategy in mind. And that comprehensive strategy also includes, you know, working with the county, making sure that people have continuity of service if they're receiving service. So I guess I'll ask about that. I also just want to point out, and I, and this isn't necessarily in saying that, that, that we shouldn't have setbacks in certain locations. But I think back in the spring when we discussed this, the memo that Councilmember Foley and I wrote was adopted at that time, saying that abatements should be the last, it should be sort of the last strategy until we have a plan because it's not necessarily solving the problem. I was uncomfortable at the time with, with defining certain locations for having setbacks whereas others don't, because we, it, everything I think has to be decided on a case-by-case basis. And for example, you know, we have a case on the border of our district in District Three, right by Coyote Creek, which has been growing into a more unsafe encampment. And it wouldn't fall though into, into any of the other setback strategies. But we knew that with the incoming storms, it may become a problem for people who live there. And we know that over the weekend, the fire department had to respond in the middle of the night to people stuck in the creek, clinging to the tree. And one person was rescued and the other person is still apparently missing or was lost in the creek. And so there are places where I think we ought to be focused that may not actually fall under our setback strategy. So that's why I'm concerned about focusing on specific setback strategies where instead of a case-by-case strategy. But anyway, I think I digressed from the initial question. If John or you, or somebody on your staff want to weigh in on my recommendations in my memo, I would, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, councilmember. I'll start with the first one and then I think Reagan can talk about the next two. We're happy to come up with sort of a system, you know, the way I read this, you and I had had a conversation previously, is sort of how do we get one on the list? And so we're happy to come up with sort of what that criteria is. Obviously, you know, someone just pitching a tent somewhere that's not causing much of problems isn't going to probably need that kind of service. But certainly the example you gave in your own district, which we've also, we've also talked about, is a more complex and certainly one that needs attention. There's no doubt about it. So we're happy to, to create a, a little bit of a process, not a difficult one, for all the council members, sort of a little checklist for you to say, if it meets these criteria, come talk to us and we'll go look at it. It's not that we won't go look at anything at any time. I mean, not that we can look at everything at once, but, you know, we can always put something on the list to check out and see if it needs help. And we can also, you know, take it to our multidisciplinary team and do a much more in-depth assessment of what the needs are and/or whether or not it's compatible with the area it's in. Hand it over to Reagan.
Thanks, John. So for your third recommendation, Councilmember Cohen, I think we would agree with that. And, and in our, when the Housing Department was conducting abatements, we were very diligent about communicating upcoming abatements to make sure some of our partners and stakeholders, such as the county and Valley Homeless Healthcare, were informed of upcoming abatements so that they could visit that location prior, but also connect with individuals after an abatement. I think number two is a bit more complicated. We do have a goal to double our shelter bed capacity as part of our community plan. And it was that, a goal that we discussed at great length with the county. Because when you start building more crisis intervention programs, such as safe parking or shelter, you could potentially be diverting from more permanent housing-focused programs. And so we're trying to strike a balance in our county. Not to mention that funding is very limited for crisis intervention programs like safe parking and shelter beds. Nationally, Housing First is the prioritized best practice. So we have very limited funding to increase shelter beds and other crisis intervention programs. But I would say we do have that commitment to double our shelter bed capacity. We also have a commitment to increase utilization of our current shelter beds across our system. They average, I think, between 75 and 80% utilization. The county tracks utilization monthly. And so we have a commitment as a collective system to increase that utilization to a higher rate. And so that means lowering barriers to shelter. For example, making sure that people can take belongings with them. That is one of the primary reasons we hear of people who don't want to take shelter is they don't want to leave belongings behind. They don't want to leave a partner behind or a pet behind. And so part of this commitment to greater, increasing our shelter utilization is lowering barriers to make it easier for our customers to utilize. So I guess I say all that, councilmember, by way of saying I'm, number two is just, is more complicated. It is a factor that we definitely consider. The existing MOA with the Water District outlines our procedures that have to happen prior to an abatement. And it does include outreach before an abatement, offering shelter.
Yeah, I appreciate the answers. And I know that, that the request isn't a simple one or a straightforward one. And I know it's what we would all like to have achieved. And maybe it's more of an, it's partly an aspirational recommendation. The reason I make, I say it though, is based on experience. I mean, we've had, we know, and I'm sure many of us have had this experience, where we have a, an encampment, we have a neighborhood or a community asking for it to be cleaned or it fits into criteria. We put a lot of resources and effort into coming in and making sure that that area is clean. It might be along a creek, for example. And we had one difference on a stretch of Penitentia Creek in our district where that abatement happened. And the neighborhood was happy, the, the Water District was happy. But two months later, the encampment was back and not much different than it was before. And so I'm partly concerned about the humanitarian effect of doing this. Obviously, that's very important. The other piece, of course, is resource question. If we're not going to be able to move people and place them, we're not, we're spinning our wheels and we're duplicating efforts and spending resources unnecessarily. And so, you know, it's, it's a complicated thing. We need to have, we need to have a strategy for helping clean up large areas which are very much in the way or very unsightly. Some of this is about trash management and not about the management of the people living there. I understand that. But of course, we're dealing with a major humanitarian issue at the same time. And we aren't necessarily solving the problem unless we have recommendation number two on my memo as part of the calculation when making these decisions. two on my memo as part of the calculation when making these decisions. Um, so that's why I make the recommendation. But it's not to say the staff is, I mean, I, I do believe our, our staff in, in Housing Department, in the PRNS, in Beautify SJ are doing a yeoman's job in terms of, you know, all the challenges that we're facing and trying to get it done. And it's not, and again, we don't want, um, we don't want, as we said, uh, we know the, the inboxes at Beautify SJ are, are blowing up every day and we can't keep up with it. But that's part of my concern, is that if all we're doing is trying to keep up with these requests and we're not solving the problem, we're just moving the problem around, those, that we're not, we're not making progress towards our ultimate goal. Um, we're just having short-term, uh, you know, seeing some short-term effects which aren't long-term. So that's, that's why I recommended those things. Um, I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of my council, but I would like to hope that the, the motion would consider, uh, the elements, items two and three, particularly in three as well. I mean, I know three is something that's already attempted, but I think I'd like to make sure it's, it's in the list of recommendations to sort of codify the idea that services are as important as the cleanup. So I'll, I'll leave it at that for now and see what other colleagues might want to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I don't know, Reagan, did you get a chance to respond to recommendation three in Councilmember Cohen's memo on, on to staff feedback on it?
Yeah, I think, uh, the Housing Department feels more comfortable with number three. It is something that we already do.
Okay. So it, it is something you already do, then it's not necessarily a, a new task that you'll have to incorporate?
No, I think we have, definitely have some workflow or process improvements to make now that, um, abatements have transitioned to PRNS to make sure we're sort of in lock step with their workflow. But I think we are not, certainly not, um, don't have any concerns about recommendation number three.
Okay. Is that something that the Housing Department is going to hand off to, uh, PRNS and somebody in PRNS will be doing? Or that's something still that somebody at Housing will be doing, you'll just have to coordinate with?
Yeah, the Housing Department would continue to do this work in number three. We just need to coordinate with Beautify.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And just while we're on the topic of Councilmember, um, Cohen's, um, memo here, um, and, and I appreciate his, his analysis in there, and I'm, I'm not going to, uh, kick the dead horse today, but I'm going to point it out. Um, this is why I think, uh, you know, or I don't think, this is why I know, um, I was alluding to the need and the situation we would be in today. I was specifically talking about, um, the Guadalupe River Parkway area encampment, uh, but just in general, on having a sanctioned encampment or a sanctioned location somewhere or several places throughout the city to be able to identify relocation. And, and areas where we would specifically be able to say, um, there is not going to be, you know, abatement in these areas, that we will continue to run them similar to how we're, we're running the, the source sites. We're, we're almost there as, as we know, and we've increased the source sites, um, but we're, we're, we're not all the way there. And, and not only, I think, is it a challenge operationally, it's a challenge to explain, and I, I imagine my colleagues are in a similar situation, because we don't necessarily have a response to our, our residents to say, hey, this area is, is sanctioned. Instead, we say, well, this area is not a priority for abatement, right? So it's not next to a school, it's not blocking the right of way, um, it doesn't really quite fall into that list of a priority area. But encampment is still, you know, illegal and it's something we could come out and debate, we just can't really, uh, tell you when or how or where it's going to fall in that list. And, um, and then obviously what we're doing today, sort of adding some more areas, which I do appreciate, things like, uh, in and around schools, uh, and playgrounds, uh, the mobile home fencing, residential fencing, hospitals, right, trauma, and then, and then the, the big one, the area near waterways. Um, we're not there yet, uh, but, but I think regardless, even when we get there, let's say we're, we have as robust staffing as we, we want, and we're able to address all these priority areas, it still is lacking clarity on the rest of the areas around, um, the city where, where people are encamping, and doesn't give us, I think, a, a, an ability to give a clear response to constituents and to our residents. Um, and it also doesn't give those that are unhoused, um, really that, that, that sense of, of security in regards to where is it that I, I actually could lay my hat while there is not enough shelter out there in the city? Uh, it's just a, you know, I think it's a situation we're going to continue to be in until we do have enough shelter, whether it's the lowest level of shelter, which, you know, in my mind, uh, is not ideal, but it's, it's the easiest and, and it's what's happening now, which is encamping. Um, it's happening now whether we like it or not, or whether we authorize it or not. Or it's tiny homes and, you know, gone all the way up the list to permanent supportive housing. Uh, we're going to be in this boat for, for quite some time until we get to that solution. I, um, I was, um, coincidentally in, in Austin this weekend and took the time to go and tour the Community First Village that's there, that some, some of my colleagues may have heard about because there's been some in, interest from, um, community members here in San Jose to try and recreate a village like that, that has around 500 units of tiny homes, mix of RV trailers and, um, and, and I think that, you know, even at that scale, which sounds great, 500 units, as we know, is, is still not solving our problem, right? A hundred and, you know, 70 permanent supportive housing units is still not solving our problem. Um, and so we're many, many years away in reality. And, um, and I just think that that's why we, we should have, uh, gone down that path of at least looking at adding sanctioned encampments to our tool chest. Um, but like I said, it's, it's not something that I'm going to kick today, just pointing out, and maybe in the future we'll kick that again and see if it, if it'll revive. Um, in regards to the work that is, is being suggested here, I would say, and I appreciate the, the memo from my colleagues, uh, the mayor, Councilmember Mayhend, and the vice mayor, um, I think that recommendation of one, that, that the, the hiring is, as we know, key, and, and you've already pointed that out in your memo in regards to the deficiencies that you have right now and the, the staffing up that you need to do. Um, so I, I support that recommendation one there. I do think that that's key because none of this that you're talking about trying to enhance is possible unless we have the staff to do it. And so that's, uh, I think that's the number one priority right now is try to get those people in, get staffed up as much as possible, and hopefully we don't have, um, you know, a, a regular attrition occurring, because this is very difficult work. And, uh, and John, I want to say thank you for the way that you framed the conversation today, just talking about the, the, the real challenge, uh, and the realities of what it is that you're doing and what it is you're not doing. Um, and I think the impacts on everybody. And that's really important. It, it, we know this is extremely impactful for those, uh, individuals in our community that are out there unhoused and are experiencing this trauma, but also for those that are doing this work. It's, this is not easy work, and, um, to go out and, and be a part of this entire equation, uh, it's, it's going to take a toll. And, um, and, and we want to be able to provide as much support and resources as possible, but also, uh, I think be able to give those individuals the resources and, and the knowledge, the information, so that way it's not just them going out and doing a simple task of, say, cleaning or abating or picking up trash, but also where they have maybe a slightly deeper understanding of, hey, there are solutions happening here, there are, there are resources, right? You're not alone, uh, in, in this solution, and they are not alone, our city staff are not alone in going out and, and doing that work. Um, and so I think it's, it's really important, and I just want to say thanks for, for framing it that way. In regards to the, and I support that the staff recommendations moving forward, uh, look forward to getting to that point where we can add these, these new priorities to the list, uh, especially around our city park playgrounds. That's something I've been hearing frequently, and I would agree with our constituents. Um, and, and I think that, you know, we want to be able to, to get that as a priority area to, to keep clear. In regards to the memo from the mayor, vice mayor, and Councilmember Mayhend, it sounds like, and I was going to ask that question, it sounds like you answered in regards to the feasibility of number four, they're, they're talking about just inquiring anyways, so it looks like, you know, you gave a decent answer here, maybe there is a little bit of wiggle room with Valley Water. Um, and I understood that we did have that MOU with UPRR, which, uh, when I read this at first, that's the first thing I thought of, and I just recalled how I think that took around three years to get. So it's not easy work, right? I think it's easy to, to sort of put into a memo and say, hey, let's, let's try to do something like this, and it sounds like it should be fairly easy enough. Um, but just, you know, understanding and, and realizing that experience that we have with UPRR, it was very challenging. Um, and so, but I am glad that we have one and understandably that we have one that's pretty unique, um, in the country. But I'm comfortable with, with the directions there and, and the, the additional considerations. I would like to, and I don't think it was added into the, the memo, or excuse me, into the motion, was Councilmember, uh, Cohen's memo, recognizing the challenges with, um, recommendation number two. I think potentially what we can ask for, instead of just say simply include, similar to the other memo where we say consider including, and then that way maybe you can have a little bit more detailed conversation with us when you come back. Um, that, that would be the only, based on your response that you already gave to it, Reagan. And so, um, at, at least it would keep the conversation moving on that recommendation two from Councilmember Cohen. So I'll ask for a friendly amendment that it includes, uh, Councilmember Cohen's memo, which is the change there on recommendation two, to put, um, the wording of consider in front. Reagan, you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, we're good with that.
Great. Okay. Fine with me.
All right. The motion's amended.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to say, uh, a huge thank you, um, for, uh, I know it took a lot of work and a lot of collaboration to put this before us today. I know how hard you all have been working on this. Um, I, uh, am also very aware that it's not very black and white, that there are a lot of considerations, and, um, and especially your frontline staff, um, working through a pandemic. Uh, before we had vaccines, it's, you know, uh, and it is hard. And I know, uh, some of the Beautify SJ staff, um, I know them, and I know that some of those folks have been able to build rapport, um, with encampment residents and, uh, really move people to shelter and programs, and it was through their rapport that they were able to do that. So I just wanted to start off saying thank you. Um, I'm going to be quick, but I just want to go all over the place. On, on slide six, um, we've talked about this in terms of blight, um, in encampments. I don't know if somebody can show slide six, um, but I, I do think, um, blight is, um, you know, there's a lot of illegal dumping that is blamed on encampments, but it's not encampments, and it's just people dumping, uh, things in the street because they live in an apartment or they live in a dense housing situation. They don't, they can't call junk pickup, right? So, um, they dump it in the street. And that happens a lot in District Seven, and, and I, I'm just going to make a plug for dumpster days because it's a big deal in communities like mine that have, um, some of the city's most overcrowded census tracts. And so a lot of the residents in District Seven don't have alternatives. And all right, so somebody's not going to pull up slide six, but I'll, I'll just read it. Um, it shows that we've, um, pulled up, picked up 950,000 pounds of debris in neighborhood dumpster days and beautification events. District Seven alone, last year, picked up 750,000 pounds of trash. That's just District Seven dumpster days. That's not even what my colleagues are doing, and I know you're all out there, because I see you all. Um, and, and so, but the reason I bring that up is it, it is an equity issue. It's, it's an issue for folks that don't have alternatives, and I wanted to bring that up because it's, um, and, and the, there was in the report that blight went up 37% or, I'm sorry, illegal dumping went up 37% this past year. Um, you know, I think there are a lot of reasons for that, but, um, it's not all homelessness. It's a lot of folks that don't have alternatives, and so the fact is that we as a city need to continue to offer those services. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. Um, I also wanted to address data. Um, I, I, um, really appreciate city staff holding the line on data because, um, prior to, um, last year, setting up this database system and mapping system, we as a city essentially rewarded the loudest folks. We rewarded people that text the mayor on a Saturday afternoon and, or at all hours of the day. Uh, that's what we rewarded, and we really need to, um, uh, look at the impacts. And so I just wanted to mention that. Um, on partners, uh, I appreciate Union Pacific. Um, I know that some of the businesses in my district have frustrations when I reach out to city staff. Um, you're able to get Union Pacific to move pretty quickly, and I, I see things have moved in a very positive direction. They did get a rocky start, as you mentioned, um, and it's gotten a lot better. Caltrans, I think it's frustrating for all, including Caltrans, by the way, because they're getting sued for what they're doing in some cities, and so, um, so I think they're just as frustrated as everybody else. I actually wanted to, um, include in that item, um, of the motion, when we look at partners, that, um, I wanted to ask staff to reach out to the county as well. Um, there are some encampments where there are trenches that have been dug, um, next to Capital Expressway, it's on the county side, um, and we've been going back and forth for two years, and it potentially threatens the stability of the overpass. And this is something that we're still going back and forth with. Um, and, uh, so I wanted to include that as well. Um, uh, having said that though, that I think the county, um, are, they're a tremendous partner, they are the primary. I heard some comments that the county's not doing anything. Well, the county is the primary on our homelessness system. Um, I have a lot of county facilities in my district, or they're either owned by the county or their county contracts. Um, and so they are doing a lot. Um, however, I think that we have so much more work to do on, um, how we work with the county on behavioral and mental health, and specifically I mean beds, I mean placements in a program. Um, I know that the county has been expanding those services, but it's not, um, along the pipeline, um, or throughout the pipeline. And, you know, when someone is in crisis and they need a detox bed, for example, they need it then, not a week from now. And I think that that's something we really need to figure out on the front lines, and I've brought this up privately, I've brought this up publicly, I've, um, I know I've brought this up with many of you in the county, but I think COVID presents an opportunity for us as a city if we need to pay for those beds. And I know it's not that simple because there's certifications and it's, it's health and, um, all that kind of stuff, but if we need to pay for those beds, then I think we should do that. Because when, uh, someone is by the creek or they're by the freeway and they're in crisis, which by the way, does not usually happen nine to five, right? Doesn't happen when it's convenient for the city or the county. But if they're in crisis and there's an opportunity to place them in a program, then we need to do that. And so, um, so that's something I would like to see us really, uh, take a collaborative approach with the county, particularly with the precious ARP funds. Um, and, um, I wanted to also say that I agree, um, I think we need more clarity on cars. Um, there is a big lack of clarity on that, I think. Um, and there are some issues, some safety issues. Um, I've had accidents get caused because of that in my district. Um, and if there's a family living in a car in front of a playground, then that family should be in one of the programs and get a motel voucher that we pay for as a city, right? So, um, so I do think we need some clarity on cars. Um, and lastly, you know, I, I know, I realize that we're balancing a lot. I appreciate how you started this off, John. Um, but it's a balancing act. I mean, I've had neighborhoods in my district that have had, um, rats and cockroaches because of the, the situation in the encampments next to them. That's not true every place in my district, but it- That's not true every place in my district, but it definitely happened. And the city had to go in there. My residents, again, overcrowded living conditions, a number of families living in each residence. And so it is a balancing act, but this is about health and safety. And I think that's why we need to make the priorities that we need to in some tough decisions. So with that said, I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to commend Olympia, and I have to say, Olympia, you're amazing. How many jobs do you have? Yeah, what?
Too many.
Like five jobs, 10 jobs? It was incredible. But John, I have high expectations in terms of inter-agency cooperation. When our residents come to us, if the encampment or the debris is on Valley Water property, or county property, or Caltrans property, they're coming to us. And we give them the explanation of, you have to go and file this report with this agency, or another report with another agency. It's not going over very well. It's not what they want to hear. Also, we're actually the experts at this thing. And if we can create economies of scale and a process where we can be the single point of contact, go in and take care of the situation, I think that would optimize all the resources. I understand, you know, you're saying our expectations and how difficult it is. But I think it's something that we should continue to push and try to get something done. Because somebody's out there, when Caltrans eventually cleans up a site, somebody's out there on the side of the freeway doing that activity. So the same issues, concerns, and challenges, and risks, and safety hazards that exist when Caltrans sends a crew out would be the same ones we'd have to address. But it's doable because they're doing it. I just want to focus in on one specific example in my district. I have an encampment that doesn't meet the criteria of what we would use to abate that encampment. But I'm getting numerous complaints from the residents in terms of trespassing, theft, you know, property, you know, adjacent to the encampment. And I know that you shouldn't just jump to the conclusion that the inhabitants, the homeless individuals of that encampment are committing those crimes. But if you can connect the crimes or issues with that encampment, is there a process to address that in the short term? Does it have to be tied to the individuals, tied to the encampment? I'm just trying to understand the process and what we can do and what we can't do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There is, within our own evaluation, there is a public safety component that we look at. To your point, though, connecting that to the individual is not so straightforward. Now, if we're seeing arrests and violence and things like that, and the police are saying, this is no bueno here, then we go, okay, that's part of our process. But when you look at some of the little petty crime that tends to happen, you know, stealing a bicycle or something that's just left unsecured out in the backyard or things like that, it's really tough to draw the line between a homeless person living in the area and that crime. I don't know if you want to add to that.
I think the only thing I would add is that we do look at health and safety. So if something doesn't meet like the school buffer zone, or it's not in the right of way, and there's a safety or health issue, we do evaluate that and determine what type of escalated actions need to occur at the site.
All right, so again, if you can't, if we can't create a nexus, if we, you know, through video or other means, you know, identify specific individuals that are coming from the encampment in petty theft or harassment of neighbors in the community, and go through the legal process, that would be the recourse that we could come to you and say, hey, here are these issues. We've identified individuals specifically at that location who are committing these acts. And therefore, we could take action. Is that an accurate summary?
Yeah, and I think this goes back to, we do do look at encampments on a case-by-case basis. But we would want to consider, again, working in concert with the police department on making sure that there's nexus, and that there is a, truly a significant safety risk. Because otherwise, again, we're just moving that safety risk to another location.
Okay.
But we would also include this, when we come back to you with our criteria, our checklist, there are many considerations. We say health and safety, but we have subsets of those that we would call out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asparza, I'll come back to you in a moment. I'm just gonna cover the folks. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. And Olympia, you are awesome, and thank you for all that you do. I can't imagine the work that you're doing and so successfully as well, and just being as responsive as you are to us and everyone else who calls in. I know that your phone is blowing up, and, but you're still very gracious and respond very kindly and take care of business. And I welcome you to when you move into the Kirk Community Center. And D9 will be happy to come over and bring you lunch occasionally. I have, what the Vice Mayor mentioned kind of triggered something that goes on in all of our neighborhoods. And that is, we have encampments or unhoused who are right abutting next to retaining walls. And on the other side of retaining walls are homes. And just recently, in one of our neighborhoods, we had reports of ladders being brought in to the encampment, placed on the wall, and the residents very concerned that they have children, concerned about the safety of their children, and others. So does that rise to the health and safety issue with you? Or how would that, how would you resolve that? How should we handle that? Because it's, as we've all said, this is about managing expectations with our community, our housed community, as well as treating the unhoused with respect and dignity. But how do we get a handle on both so that we are making the housed residents, who have a ladder right above them, and now are concerned about their health and safety?
Yeah, we will take, I would imagine that a ladder along a residential fence, after we looked into that, if, again, there was an escalated significant safety risk related to that, we would consider abatement. We would also consider talking to the unhoused residents to move back, to understand that they need to not be along a residential wall. We're currently experiencing some of these reports where folks are also warming themselves with fires right next to residential walls, fences. And that has been called for an immediate abatement. Because, again, that is a safety risk, especially with the fire. So ladders sound like a significant issue, but we would have to look at it.
Okay, so we'll give you that information offline, but thank you. The other question is, and you just raised it about fires. There's, it's cold, it's wet, and people unhoused are creating fires that are causing some very serious concerns for the neighbors. Fires get out of control, so can we, do we, and I think I may have raised this, and I've forgotten for the answer, I'm sorry. Can we provide them with fire extinguishers, the unhoused? Or what's the, what's the solution to keep their environment safe from fires getting out of control?
Well, the first thing would be, we are, we're trying to work with them to provide them with propane tanks. That's what the fire department recommends, rather than open flame fire. That would be the first recommendation, and I believe we've been providing that to certain locations. But again, we would ask people to not burn fires, and then also to not do that against residential walls and fences. So it's, again, it's trying to work with folks to move back, to go to a place that is not within one of our current buffer zones, or potentially proposed buffer zones. And then, again, keep as safe as conditions as possible for themselves and for the residents.
Yeah, and I'm very mindful of abatement and what that does to the psyche of those being abated. That must be a tremendously traumatic experience, particularly if it happens over and over again, to be abated. And there, and that's what happens. You get, they get moved from one area. My residents complain, they go over to D10. His residents complain, and they just keep going back and forth. And we keep moving them around, and that's inhumane. And it doesn't solve the problem. Really, we've talked about it, more housing is the problem. Or building more housing, quicker housing is the, is the solution. And then finally, I truly am grateful for this report and all that you're doing. I think it's a, truly a yeoman's effort, and we can't give you enough money to make your department successful, or we can't. Well, we could try. It's really staffing issue and money, right? And it looks like you're working on the staffing issue. And I support both of the memo from Councilmember Mahan and Vice Mayor, and the mayor as it relates to employment and making that as a priority, because it truly is a priority for you to get the right staff. But can you provide us, the council offices, with a service schedule to our areas so we have an idea of when areas' trash will be picked up? And so we can communicate that to the residents? Is that available?
Yes, we do have a public web map that illustrates kind of the routes and the locations and the days that they receive service. So we'll make sure that we send that link back out to all the council offices again.
Okay, great, thank you. Again, thank you very much. This is a very complex situation. I'm actually hosting a town hall on Thursday on homelessness and have a panel of experts coming to talk about it. But I'm sure this will come up as well. We're not really focusing on trash, but I'm sure that will come up as other things will. So thank you all. This has been really helpful. And I support all that you do and support both, support the memo.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo my thanks for all the work, I just have a few questions. One question is the current public, or the school buffer zone of 150 feet. I know that we did a walk-along in an area in my district some time back. And so what came to mind there was that there's actually a church that has a school attached to it, and they do sort of activities there with the kids. I think it may be primarily on Sundays, for example, I think. But what I'm, obviously not a traditional school. But I'm curious how this buffer would interact with something like that. That's a more private use, if you will, but still a school, all the same, to a certain extent.
Thank you, Councilmember. In a situation like that, if it's in the right of way, we would move it, because there's a school there. All I would ask from the councils is that when you sort of run into these non-traditional situations, just raise it up to us and let us know. And we're happy to go look at it and see what we can do. Obviously, if it's on private property and around that school, it's a little bit more complex to deal with it.
Right, right.
But anything in the right of way, we would enforce it the same we do at any other school.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I suspect that, I think that maybe for further study, hospitals, including trauma and behavioral settings, that on that same street, we had something like that, a lock facility for youth. And part of the concern was, to Pam's point, fires for some of the folks that, you know, that are in that area that may sort of start and create a situation in which some of the folks in the locked facility are gonna have difficulty getting out, assuming a fire were to start. So I appreciate you mentioning that and look forward to the further study. The thing that stands out to me as well on the further study is mobile home fencing. I know we've had some mobile home parks have some encampments right up against there. And so certainly, that's a concern, because we know that those mobile home communities often go up in flames very, very quickly. And so we want to be cognizant of that, especially some of our senior parks, where we know that the seniors maybe can't get out of those units as quick as other folks could. So appreciate that being there. The other question I had is related to what Councilmember Jones was talking about. And I'll just tell you that I've gone out to many encampments and have had conversations with. I know I've talked to Gail. I don't know if I've talked to her specifically about this. But talked to other advocates, and I think, I know it's a touchy subject, but I think we all acknowledge that within some of these encampments, that there is a level of criminality there, right? Whether it be someone selling drugs, whether it be folks violating other individuals that live in the encampment. And so what I'm curious about is, does, and I can't see who's on Zoom, but to the extent someone from the police department is there. What I'm curious about is, is there a list of X offenses in which the police department says, okay, if this happens there at the location, we are gonna sort of go into action? And I'm curious if that type of conversation takes place.
Councilmember, we do have Deputy Chief Schroeder.
Oh, wonderful.
He's on Zoom, there he is, I think.
Good evening, councilperson. I heard your question. So the simple answer to your question is no. I mean, it's all, it's really just based specifically on each individual incident and its circumstances at the time. There's no, there's no set types of crimes we respond to. Obviously, any crime of violence is something we would respond to, as you would know. But we often get, you know, I mean, with every encampment, it seems to be, there tends to be lots of calls about criminal activity, a lot of which are relatively minor in nature, which is a challenge for us, as you can imagine. So we have to weigh each particular one we get with the staffing we have at the time and the access we have to the encampment. So long-winded answer to your question would be, no, we really don't have a set of circumstances in which would automatically make us go to, to deal with a specific crime other than crimes of violence.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I know that it's a sensitive situation, right? I am, I suspect everyone up here is not, and the city staff is not interested in criminalizing people for being poor and living on the street, right? Obviously, we don't want that. And I suspect that that naturally, and I agree with it, that that plays into some of the decisions as it relates to interacting with some of the folks there. Part of the challenge, though, is, is I, and this is just me being very completely honest, that I hear in the community sometimes is, and this is just a made-up scenario, but I hear something like this. Well, we saw X person doing this, clearly a violation of the law. We call the police, and a particular officer shows up, and he says, look, I can't do anything. Her hands are tied, we can't touch them, we can't do anything. And even sometimes implying that it's us that are preventing the police department from enforcing some of these laws. And it puts us in a particular, in a difficult situation, right? Because, one, and it's a balancing act, as I think to, I think, Councilmember Asparza's point, is that trying to acknowledge, obviously, that we don't want enforcing these low-pity crimes, like stealing a bicycle, right? Which obviously is a crime, but I think we need to be thoughtful on how to do that. But at some point, I mean, there are things that happen where I fear that the police department may be standing down, where maybe they should be standing up and enforcing some of these laws for the betterment of the folks in the encampment, as well as the community. And so I'd be, I'm not expecting an answer, but I think that balance is very important. And although I, my heart breaks for the people on the street, and we need to do everything possible, and I try to do everything possible in my district, we also have an obligation to make sure that the residents that are housed in our district, and this is sort of the push and pull, right, that I described to some of the advocates, is that I understand you don't want abatements, but I also have to balance that with some of the concerns from the housed residents. And that's the inherent struggle and the challenge. And so, you know, as, so that, I'll stop there. But as an example, something that came up, because we were talking about fires. Say, for example, we explore the buffer zone for further study on mobile homes. There's a gentleman up against the fence, lights a fire, certainly a fear that it's gonna catch one of the mobile homes on fire. We send someone out from the housing department, whoever it may be, Home First, goes out, tells them, hey dude, you can't be doing this. He keeps doing it. Does the police then get involved, or we just say, well, he's refusing services, right? And so that, those are some of the things that I'm interested in exploring that I really think we need to take seriously. And so I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's sometimes often something we don't talk about, because I understand it's a sensitive topic. I certainly don't want to say anything to make people think that I think all folks living in these encampments are criminals or doing bad things. I think a lot of them are just surviving, which I think is- I think a lot of them are just surviving, which I think is very important, and we need to facilitate that survival. But in all honesty, there are some folks in there that are doing bad things. And so how do we weed those folks out to figure out how we make the folks in the encampment safe as well as our residents safe? And so to the extent you haven't thought about that, I'd really like this, these statements to really prompt that, because I think that's an important section of this that we often don't touch on, but I think is very important to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Asparza.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually forgot something on my list, and that was to have a little, hear a little bit more about capacity. I did look at the timelines for hiring, and so, you know, I'm guessing, right, January we'll have people, 28, knock on wood, 28 people in new jobs. And I support the idea, I love like the idea of somebody coming in out of the resilience corps and being able to come into a city, you know, job, hopefully a future career for them. But I'm really concerned about capacity. And Councilmember Peralas brought up Guadalupe Gardens, and it was clear to me that, you know, all the work that we've done on that has pulled resources from the rest of the city. And so I'm concerned about how we are going to move forward, how we're going to address the next few months, and is, how we're going to address the next few months in some of this planning, and how you can be more explicit about our capacity limitations to us.
Well, last week I tried. I'm joking a little, but it was a lot, you know, a lot of different nuances. You know, we do try in these, and I think the recommendations today, you know, with the exception of the one Reagan was talking about, but now modified, these are all reasonable things, I think, for us to pursue. Truthfully, though, we are building the plane while flying it still. Hopefully, you know, by January in that first quarter, we really start to hit our stride. That's our expectation, is that you start to truly see once a week trash service and what that can look like around the city, and you will see a more visually clean city. That's our goal. But yes, the more layers we add, the more complicated it gets and the less capacity we have. And so those are some things we talked about today and how we're trying to manage those. For example, add a team, that's specifically the team that works with other agencies, right? Caltrans, UPR, Valley Water, because those tend to be very difficult encampments. They tend to be big, lots of weight that we got to remove, lots of people sometimes, structures and things like that. It could take the entire week and a whole crew. And that means no trash service forever. We're ignoring that week because of that. But we want to set aside this independent team so that it doesn't take away from anything else. And I think we'll talk more about that next week in the ARP funding because that's what we're targeting for that dumpster days. You were mentioning, you know, we're asking to add a lot more money for dumpster days so that we can engage the community more in helping clean up the community. So I do think that 2022 is going to be a much cleaner year for us. You know, I think I mentioned the program was born on July 1st of this year, so, you know, we're just getting going, teaching it to walk, we're getting it out of diapers, you know, we're on our way. So I think that first quarter, you're going to start seeing the difference of these investments that you've been proving and making. And, you know, it's unfortunate we're lagging a little bit on the hiring stuff, but we have, you know, I think we feel very positive that we will be able to handle what we're expected to do right now. Now, when we come back in April and talk to you about, well, do you want to do setbacks along creeks? That's a whole nother pot of work, right? So, and even the mobile home parks and doing the setbacks, that's a lot of work. And we've had good conversations with the fire department, sort of what would that look like and how we do it? Because, you know, they've said to us, it's alarming to us when someone's right up against a mobile home park and they're lighting fires. And I know you all know the dangers of fires in mobile home parks is extreme. So, but that's going to take resources, and we're going to tell you when we come back. We're not going to say, in cases like that, we're not going to be in a position to say, well, we'll just take that on and absorb it. We're not going to be able to do two big ones like that. Around the hospitals, easy enough. There's not that many hospitals, there are not that many people encamped that close to them. Those are, that's low-hanging fruit, things like that. But some of those bigger ticket setbacks that we're going to consider, we're going to have to have a pretty frank conversation about it when we're back here in April.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add?
Okay.
One more thing, I'm sorry, just, we do think that the flexibility to add capacity will be greatly helped by increasing our funding for vendors, right? We work in partnership with Tucker and HCI, they've been great. We also have Goodwill Conservation Corps. So as we continue to, well, we put forward additional funding that you'll consider next week, but that gives us greater flexibility as we wait to bring on staff.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And thank you, John, for bringing up the whole setback in fires. I know Councilmembers Foley and Jimenez brought it up. I think all of us have had residents, I mean, I've had residents in single-family homes that have lost fences because of an encampment fire next to their home. That's scary. And we've shown photos of mobile home parks, and mobile home parks are especially terrifying because they only have a short time to get out before it burns down. And I think that's also an opportunity where we can explore more with Union Pacific. I have a lot of mobile home parks in my district, and some of those have, are next to Union Pacific land, and they're those weird little slivers that they don't necessarily always like taking responsibility for. So they're these little no man's land with no security, no, limited to no fencing. So there's an opportunity maybe for us to pursue securing those parcels or selling them to a nearby property owner so that they can secure them, i.e. the mobile home parks, right? That way, we're just not in this vicious cycle of abating these weird slivers of land or having fires at some of these fences next to mobile home parks. Because it's really, really scary when you see the flames shooting up over, you know, higher than a home. That's terrifying. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jimenez.
Just a quick question. So, you know, I'm embarrassed I don't know this, but, and I suspect it's Tucker, but when we want to get to once per week, right, picking up the garbage, is it one of the contractors such as Tucker that goes out and cleans up the garbage? Is it?
Yes, we'll be using, we have two, we actually have four vendors, and we'll be using a combination of all four of those as we transition into one-time-per-week service.
Right. You know, I can't help but think that when we mention one time per week, I think about my own garbage service, our own. And so what I'm thinking is, have we ever, and maybe you've already done this, but anyway, something that came to mind is maybe exploring the possibility of adding it to the existing routes for the city haulers? And I'm curious if there would be some efficiencies been into that. I'm just, I'm serious.
Yeah, funny you should ask. We have, you know, obviously, ESD manages the garbage contracts for the city, and they're huge. I think they're, I think I've been told they're some of the biggest in the country in terms of the cost, but I could be wrong. But the issue really comes down to the fee that they collect in order to pay for that service. And there's legal interpretation that says that fee has to directly serve the fee payer, right? So if I'm taking from that fee and I'm using it on someone that doesn't have an address and can't be billed and isn't paying into the system, I'm not allowed to use that money to clean up.
They couldn't really theoretically just build the city of San Jose and we be the payer of that fee?
I don't know how that would work. Nora, I don't know if you have an opinion on it?
Yeah.
We can look at that, that may very well.
I don't expect we're going to solve this here, but anyway, I wanted to point that out because it reminds me of, you know, they have plotted locations throughout the city. We're going to do this pickup at this location, at this cloverleaf, then they're already with the trucks, and it seems to me it makes sense to just pick it up.
We do have a pilot site in mind to consider something like that.
District 2?
Kind of, close. I think it's close.
District 7.
But we have considered that in terms of for dumpsters or for other services where it doesn't make sense for us, we can't go in for whatever reason it is.
And I'd be curious of the cost, right, of having these different vendors as opposed to just adding to this massive contracts that we have that we, I don't know if we amortize them over 30 years, whatever it is, right? And so, anyway, thank you.
I really want to embrace Councilmember Jimenez's suggestion because, let's face it, a lot of this is, is people who are living in public space, we are the public agency, maybe not for all of that land, but for an awful lot of it. And it seems to me that we could be putting disposal locations in city locations and be the rate payer. I like to believe, you know, there may well be efficiencies. Lord knows we're having a hard time hiring, and it's brutally hard work and having a company that already has the equipment, gosh. So I really appreciate that suggestion. I know it's hard to explore all these ideas, same time we're up to our knees in alligators, but if there's anything we can do to help nudge our friends over in the waste hauling business to explore it, we'd certainly be enthusiastic about it. Angel, I'm sorry, I looked like you were about to jump in. No. Okay, sorry. Okay, great. I want to also just give, I know we did talk a little bit about illegal dumping, and that's not directly in the middle of this, but I want to give mad props to the rapid response teams because those folks work incredibly hard. I was out with them a couple Saturdays ago, and we were running around Washington, Guadalupe neighborhood, and literally, it's one guy per truck, and these are enormous sofas. I don't know how the heck they're getting them in these trucks. I have no idea. They're superhuman. But, yeah, appreciate their really hard work. I noticed that the positions that we're hiring for Andrea, that you mentioned, several of them had already closed on the hiring. And how hard is it for us just to sort of reopen that, turn on the switch again if we're not getting enough?
I don't think it's very hard. They closed yesterday.
Yeah.
So we should be hearing in terms of the pool.
Okay.
But I just do want to give a big thank you to OER and Cheryl Parkman and her team that have really stepped up, and I think we are going to be in partnership with them for a while. So I don't think it would be hard to open it back up if we needed to.
Okay, well, if you've got lots of candidates, great. If not, I'm happy to, I was just going to try to tweet out a message or something.
Please do. Please do, don't stop.
Yeah, so just let me know where to send it. No, we'll do it. I thought Councilmember Jimenez raised another really important but really difficult to discuss issue, which is, you know, we should never, ever, ever criminalize homelessness, and we should always be absolutely committed to supporting our unhoused neighbors and getting on their feet and getting them housed. But we also know that the unhoused are disproportionately victims of crime, and particularly violent crime, and we know they're victimized a lot by others who are out there. And I think we have to accept the reality, which I know is anathema to some, which is that we're going to have police officers in encampments, just like we have police officers in neighborhoods. And it's going to be necessary for a variety of reasons, but I can tell you, I remember going on one walk-along with the street crimes team, and the first tent we approached, you know, there were some meth pipes out in front, and so obviously it gave the officers a reason to say, hey, you guys, you know, what's going on? You can't use this stuff, you know? There wasn't going to be any arrests, who's going to seize the pipes because you're not going to get anybody, you know, in jail or anything for that. But, you know, they ran the warrants on these two guys who were in this large tent structure, there were two women there too, and they both had warrants out for felony domestic violence. And so, you know, they picked them up on the warrants, because these guys were, you know, failed to appear, obviously, for their criminal court cases. You know, there are those situations, and I think in that case, the officers probably saved somebody from being abused. And so I just think, you know, we have to be pragmatic and realistic about it, about the horrible dangers that our unhoused are facing out there. And as difficult as it may be for us to talk about police being out there, I think that's the reality. And I know our police are not thrilled about doing this, but it's important. Really appreciate all the discussion. I really appreciate Andrea, what you said about how we're going to be shifting, looks like from outputs to outcomes. I know you've probably heard me preach enough about that. I just, I know we're doing a lot of work, but the most important thing is, you know, what's happening for the unhoused and what's happening for the rest of the residents who are observing all of this, and I think really understanding outcomes from that perspective is going to be so important. And it'll help us improve. I noticed on page seven, there was some discussion around the mental health and substance abuse challenges that obviously our teams are encountering, and so are the nonprofit teams are doing outreach. And it says, there's a pain point in our service work plan that's a priority to resolve. And I wanted to just get a sense from you about how, I know the county's likely stretched on resources too, but how has the county been responding to the city's expression of, hey, this is a real pain point for us?
Can I ask a clarifying, are you talking about specific individual cases or just in general?
I guess more in general, like in terms of, you know, are we able to get somebody into a detox center? Are we able to get somebody into treatment? Are we able to get?
I can start. So I think the county faces some similar challenges in terms of not having enough, let's say, detox beds to meet the need. Similar to, we don't have enough housing units to meet the need. But I will say that the county's responsive to requests, I'll just, I'll give Heading and Spring as an example. When we said we need an all-hands-on-deck approach to Heading and Spring, and we need behavioral health at the table, they said absolutely, and they're there with us every week, and they've created a sort of backdoor kind of referral system, and we're case conferencing and sharing information about clients, and they're going out to work with specific individuals that we've identified need their assistance. So I guess my experience is, there's still work to be done. They still have their challenges with resources and not enough beds. But when we do ask for assistance, you know, they do their best. I think it's still challenging for some specific encampments, you know, we may, we encounter instances where somewhat an individual is, certainly looks like they're a harm to themselves, whether they're...
They're having an episode.
Yes. And it's in that moment that's, I think, a little more difficult to find a solution. Although I will say the mobile crisis response team, which is somewhat new, should help us in those sort of immediate crisis situations.
And that's the partnership with county mental health and the police?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if my colleagues want to add anything.
I just wanted to say, I think we're in a series of kind of deeper seek-to-understand conversations with them, especially around as they're contemplating their implementation of Laura's Law assisted outpatient treatment, really trying to strengthen, like I said, the warmer handoff. Because right now, it's great that we have a backdoor line for Guadalupe Gardens, but what about, you know, Reinhardt? What about, you know, so all the other 220 that we've kind of have in our, in our mind that are severe? Not all 220 need this. But, so we are, we're together, we're going to figure this out. And again, that's a part of the workflow and coordination and constant conversation that we need to be having with the county.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, you know, I do, I'm mindful of the fact that county has challenges and limitations as every county does. I'm not super optimistic that there's going to be a lot of people who are going to fit in the, in the legal framework that Laura's Law is going to enable us to really help get into treatment or civil commitment or anything that will enable them to get services just based on what we've seen in other counties. It's a really small number of folks. What I'm hoping is that this conversation can progress to really focus on what seems to be driving an enormous number of what we perceive as mental health episodes, which seems to be very highly correlated to methamphetamine use and finding ways. And, you know, I've been spending time with the county, we've gone through the sobering station with folks, and, you know, it's just not a great answer for methamphetamine use because we know there's often unpredictable and often violent behaviors associated with that, so you just, you can't use a typical sobering station. But I'm hopeful that we can find a better path that'll enable us... station. But I'm hopeful that we can find a better path that'll enable us to address what I think we're seeing, not just here, but certainly in LA, in Phoenix, a lot of big Southwest cities, which is just a huge scourge of meth use out on the street that seems to be getting worse, because the meth itself has changed, and the behavior is even more challenging. And so, anyway, I appreciate it's tough out there for everybody who's trying to do this work, and it's even tougher for folks who are living out there. So thank you for the work you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to find ways to get resources to support you. All right, we've got a motion. Thanks to all my colleagues for their dialogue. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye. Okay, we've got time for open forum.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the meeting today. Thanks for all the work on this item. You know, to try to clarify my words from the previous item, some of my words, you know, we're going through a lot of new things right now with the subsidy money involved with, that can help with housing programs and new council persons working on the efforts. I hope, you know, our more traditional progressive housing activist community will want to get involved with these new things that are happening. They can offer some real guidance and help, I think, responsible help. We need all sorts of help with these sorts of things. And, you know, it's, to address the future of subsidies needs a lot of responsible guidance as well. So, thank you. There was a few other things I, I wanted to mention at this time. I've written to yourselves about my, I've been talking so much about earthquake stuff over the past six months that I hope I can begin to talk to yourselves on a personal, individual level to get some sort of sense how we can have a more responsible and mature conversation, how I can talk about these sort of subjects in our future, the planning of these things, of these issues. How do we talk about planning? How do we make that an open conversation for everyone to understand? How do we plan for the next year compared to the next few years? You know, if we learn a lang, I think we can learn a better, more open language to discuss that, and so everyone's more clear about how we talk about things. I need some help with that, and would like some about the future of emergency preparedness ideas. Thank you. With 20, 19 seconds left. Oh, a big meeting coming up about the future of the city charter, I mean, yeah, the city charter process. I hope that can be ways we can consider a future of a steady session process into the beginning of 2022. Thanks.
A. Goldcha?
Yes. Hi. Thank you, members. I've just popped in because I'm, I live at the California Renaissance Town Homes, and I'm speaking up about the 71 Vista Montaña parking lot. It's, there's no, we're not getting any resolution. We're not getting acknowledged for our efforts in trying to communicate with the council members. The last week, we had an introduction to the city manager, but we, only one person was able to speak. I feel like you guys are trying to ignore us. And as residents, longtime resident, I'm concerned about the lack of security for our neighborhood when there's security inside by, with one guard, and then there's only, but you're not creating the security outside that fenced area. And there's a lot of activity outside of that fenced area, because these people have friends that are coming, and they're parking on our streets, and they're coming to, to meet with these people. We have no idea what's going on. There doesn't seem to be oversight. It seems that there's, the funds that you must have received for only like two porta potties for the residents that are on an arsenic-ridden landfill, and you're putting people on there to live, which is, the city itself deemed it uninhabitable last year. I feel like I'm consistently repeating myself. However, until you guys actually pay attention that it's, it's a dangerous site for all the residents, not only in it, but outside of the, outside of that lot, you've just put our community in danger. And it doesn't make sense to me that our officials would do that. Thank you.
Caller 5140?
This last caller is exactly what I'm talking about. Dereliction of duty by the city and the police officers of San Jose. You guys let everybody else break the rules. These people have special privileges. Somebody who's got money or a car that was registration and an address, you people have no problem ticketing it, towing it, harassing the driver. Got no problems doing that. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves for what you do, what you do to the average citizen. This poor woman, I've heard her call in before. You guys just poo, poo, poo her, man. You probably turn your cameras off and laugh. I think you guys think this is all funny, because what else could it be? I mean, really, you're letting these people do whatever they want. Hey, they don't want to pay the fine? Then they go to jail. Because if I went to court and I don't pay my fine, you know what the judge is going to do? He's going to throw me in the slammer, or he's going to put a bench warrant out for me. And he, and I'm going to tell you something, your officers will put me in jail gladly, especially if they know who I am. I mean, they, they've treated me badly when they didn't know who I was. But you got, you, you guys need to do some soul searching, man. You're letting, you're, you're allowing people to break the rules. And don't have them. Get rid of the law. I mean, Pam and Sam, they love regulations for homeowners, you know, the flagpoles, the sheds, the fences. You guys love to make someone tear a fence down or a flagpole that's too high. But hey, you park your car somewhere and have it full of junk and defecate outside, that's okay. You want to shoot heroin, that's okay. You want to snort meth, that's okay. You want to have an open container, you're not going to get the $1,250 fine for that if you're homeless. You're going to get to walk.
Caller 6910?
Hi. I actually wanted to make a couple of comments. One of them is regarding Vista Montaña. I cannot imagine how much good could be done in this world if all of those people actually got together to effect some real positive change for unhoused people instead of calling in like scared little ninis, making up crazy stories about unhoused people. I also wanted to address another issue regarding the unhoused folks. Earlier today, it was brought up about crime and meth. Dr. Jordan, in her study about unhoused deaths, pointed out that in 2011 to 2013, the unhoused meth death rate went up 300%. Nobody responded to that. Nobody created an emergency. And now you're like, wow, meth is a problem. This isn't breaking news. And if we don't address that and create it and address it like a real issue, create more treatment centers, create more THUs, and more places for people to actually go once they get out of a THU rather than a shelter or the streets, it will become, it will be an ongoing problem. There needs to be more action from the city and state to address this. And maybe the caller before me could get off alcohol and stop calling in. He's just bitter. Thanks.
Back to the chair.